Is it your hand that we're ready? I need one's raised hand, but you say look to James for thumbs up. Okay. Staff, staff, class come to order.
We're good.
Does class come to order ring any bells with you, Vice Mayor? Okay, this isn't a class. I am going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tonight is Tuesday, February 18, 2025, and the City of Alameda City Council is called to order. We are going to begin with a closed session, and I would like to ask our city clerk Laura Weisiger to please call the roll.
Council members Bowler.
Here.
Dayzag.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Pryor.
Here.
Mayor Ezzy Ashcraft.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. So we start with the consent calendar. This is just for, sorry, the consent calendar, which is routine, and this is again just for closed session consent calendar. Items are routine will be approved by one motion unless removed by council members. Madam Clerk, would you introduce our consent calendar item?
Yes, so this one is to designate the negotiators from the City 42701 Monarch Street, which is Auctions by the Bay, which is item 4A. So it's designating the negotiators for that one, and we have no public comment.
All right, that was my next question. All right, so then what I'm looking for, council, is a motion to approve the negotiators, as the city clerk just indicated, and a second. Vice Mayor Pryor moves, seconded by Councilmember Dayzag. I read body language because you just can't wait for people to talk. All right, we've had a motion, it's been seconded, any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passes unanimously, no public comment on closed session. So we are about to adjourn to closed session to considering, to consider the following three items. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce the closed session items?
4A is Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property is Building 20, 2701 Monarch Street in Alameda, California. Negotiating, city negotiators are the city manager, base reuse and economic development director, management analyst, assistant city attorney. Negotiating parties are the City of Alameda and Auctions by the Bay under negotiation are priced in terms of the lease. 4B is Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property is 2151 Berry Point in Alameda, California. City negotiators are the city manager, base reuse and economic development director, base reuse manager, community development manager, and assistant city attorney. Negotiating parties are the City of Alameda and Little Opera House under negotiation are priced in terms of lease option. 4C is Conference with Legal Counsel Potential Litigation, Potential Initiation of Litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 Subsection D4. The number of cases are one with the city initiating litigation as plaintiff and the potential defendant is the Port of Oakland.
All right, thank you. So with that, could we please have staff who are related to item 4A and city council come on back? And to the rest of the public, we intend to be back before you for a seven o'clock start time. And I would like to note for the record that it is 7:07. Okay, we're two minutes after. I said we'd start at 7:05. I promised the Vice Mayor's mother who's watching. Hi, Mrs. Pryor. Okay, so we have returned from closed session, and I would like to ask our city clerk Laura Weisiger to please announce any action taken in closed session.
Regarding 4A, which was property negotiators for Auctions by the Bay, staff provided information and council provided direction by unanimous vote in favor. And then regarding 4B, which was property negotiators for the Little Opera House, staff provided information and council provided direction with no vote taken and with Vice Mayor Pryor absent for that item. And then 4C, potential litigation with the potential defendant of the Port of Oakland, staff provided information and council provided direction with no vote taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, and with that.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry, I'm sorry. City Attorney, even.
Yes, if I may just add that the Vice Mayor recused on the radiant item in addition to being absent.
Yes, recused herself.
Oh, and it was a refusal, yes.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, so thank you, Madam Clerk. And with that, we will adjourn the closed session, and I will call to order the special joint meeting of the city council and the successor agency to the Community Improvement Commission, which was once known as Redevelopment Agency. But we will start that with the pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask Councilmember Greg Bowler if he would lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Please, please rise if you're able. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowler. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Bowler.
Here.
Dayzag.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Pryor.
Here.
Mayor Ezzy Ashcraft.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. And this is the consent calendar just for the successor agency, and these are routine items that will be approved by one motion unless a council member removes an item for discussion. And is there, is there public comment on this?
There is none. We don't have any.
Okay, so what I'm looking for then is a motion to approve the consent calendar for the successor agency meeting. It's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. And so then we will adjourn the special session of the successor agency, and we will call to order the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, February 18, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you, will you please call the roll?
Roll call has been noted, five present.
Thank you. And do we have any agenda changes?
We do not.
I didn't think so. Okay, so, and I don't think we have any proclamations or special orders of the day, correct?
We have just a presentation, an external presentation from a former council member who is now in an elected body.
Well, but before we, that's actually item three. Yes, we do. Before we go to item 3A, welcome, everyone. It's nice to see you in person, and welcome anyone who's out there watching virtually. I always like to start with the ground rules for conducting a public meeting, and so I'm going to do that now, and then we'll get on with the rest of the meeting. So this is a city council meeting. It is a business meeting. We are here to conduct the city's business. It is not theater, it is not a sporting event. So therefore, we sit and we listen respectfully while people are speaking, while the council is conducting their business. There's no applause, there are no boos, cheers, jeers, we don't do the wave. If you want to hold up a poster, a sign, you can do that. It's part of your First Amendment right. I just ask that unless you're in that very back row, don't hold it over your head because it makes it difficult for people to see behind you, and we want everybody to have equal access to the meeting. And I always like to remind people that sometimes we see young people in the audience. I see at least one here today, and we love that because we want them to be engaged in civic life, starting from an early age, and some are watching at home with their families. So we want to lead by example. I also want to make sure that City Hall, this is the town hall, it is your place to have a public forum, is always a safe space where people can feel that they can speak their mind. We hope they do it respectfully, but again, the First Amendment is a wonderful tool, sometimes a little double edged, but therefore, we just want people to listen respectfully while people speak. You don't have to agree with what is said, but then when it's your turn to speak, I will also see that people are respectful and listen to you. And I also want to just add some language to keep in mind, and this comes from the Penal Code, the California Penal Code. Section 403 states that it is a criminal offense for any person to, without authority of law, willfully disturb or break up any assembly or meeting that is not unlawful in character, other than an assembly or meeting referred to in Penal Code 302 or the Elections Code, which this is not. First violations will receive a warning and conditional, continued violations will require additional action, which could include police intervention. So as the presiding officer, I just want everybody to keep that in mind, and that way we can have an orderly meeting and just go through and conduct the people's business. So thank you for listening, and then with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call our first speaker, or our item 3A?
Presentation by Jim Odie, Ward 5 East Bay Municipal Utility District Board of Directors.
Welcome back. Speaker Odie?
How do we do our glasses now, sorry?
I think you have them on, okay.
So good evening, everyone. City Council, Mayor, esteemed staff, our city attorney, city manager, deputy city manager, city clerk, and all the staff. My name is Jim Odie. You probably remember me. I sat on that side for a while, now I'm standing here, and I think this is the first time I've actually given a presentation, so we'll see how it goes. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. It's always a pleasure to be back here in these chambers. You know, it was a while when we couldn't even meet here, so it's nice to see you all back here. I'm here today to introduce myself as your new representative on the East Bay Municipal Utility District Board of Directors and take a few minutes to share the work we're doing in Alameda. But first, you know, you all know as elected officials, the importance of having great staff because you have great staff, and at East Bay Mud, we're also blessed with amazing staff, and I have one of our staffs with me today, Sun Kwang, who actually lives in Alameda. He's our community affairs representative, covers Ward 5, which is Alameda and parts of Oakland, and Ward 6, which is basically the big chunk of Oakland. So he helped prepare this, so whatever is good out of this presentation, he did, whatever is bad is my problem. So he'll come back up later, I guess you want to stand here, it's your call, to help answer questions because he knows East Bay Mud like the back of his hand. So as many of you know, I've lived in Alameda over 25 years and had the opportunity to be involved in the community. I worked as our district director for then Assemblymember Rob Ante, who now is our Attorney General. And, you know, standing here, you gave me 10 minutes, so I'm only, I'm used to nine, so I should be able to get everything done in under 10 minutes. So I recently joined the East Bay Mud Board of Directors, representing Ward 5. Ward 5 is all of Alameda, a big chunk of San Leandro, most of San Lorenzo, and then parts of Oakland on this side of 880. So it's a really exciting district to represent. You know, our role as board members, you know, we're supposed to ensure the safe, affordable, and high-quality drinking water to our 1.4 million customers and reliable wastewater services for about half of them, 740,000 customers. You know, the first quarter, you know, they just threw us right in as, you know, Councilmember Bowler and Vice Mayor Pryor, you probably understand this, you know, we have to do labor negotiations, we have to adopt a budget, we have to set rates, and we have to do the all-important cost of service study, which, as you all know, you can't charge more than it costs you to provide service. So all of that's happening all at once, so it's lots of fun. But I did want to talk a little bit, you know, less about the challenges, but some of the things we're actually investing in in Alameda. You know, we work, the work we do is critical for all 35 cities we have, and I have a couple slides if we want to pop those up. I know when I was sitting there, I liked maps, so I have a couple maps. So many of the investments we're doing are actually taking place in Alameda, and I do, which way?
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Ah, there we go. So there's the map. We're investing $15 million ward-wide in our pump station improvements, and you can kind of see the pump stations are the red triangles on that map. One of the biggest ones is their Pump Station H, which is right across the High Street Bridge in Oakland. So these are the facilities that lift the sewage from our water system, or our city's water system, to the interceptors before it goes to the wastewater plant. And the wastewater plant is up there in East Oakland. You've probably all seen it when you drive to the Bay Bridge. And there it's treated and safely discharged into the bay. And you can see the map there. We're also investing $24 million ward-wide to rehabilitate those inceptors that I talked about. And if you look on that map where Webster Street is, crossing Marina Village up on the upper, you know, left hands, I guess it's left-hand side of the map, that's where our Alameda interceptor is. So that one's getting worked on, and we're also upgrading our drinking water pipelines that supply Alameda and Bay Farm. And you can see those are the other blue lines, you know, at the crossing by the Webster Two, by the Bay Farm Bridge, and then I think that's the Fruitvale Bridge, right? So lots of money we're spending here in Alameda. And we're also doing, expanding our recycled water network to parts of Alameda for irrigation and industrial purposes because one of our values is that we try to minimize the use of pristine lake water for, you know, watering lawns or industrial purposes. You know, that should be safe, in my opinion, for our customers. And also improving the water supply reliability for all our customers. So we're also all committed to water conservation, offering free water-saving devices and rebates to help residents and businesses reduce water use. So if you want to know more about any of these projects, please feel free to reach out to me. I do want to give, I had this earlier in my presentation, and I forgot to mention it, but I do want to give a huge shout out to my predecessor, Doug Linney. You all know Doug Linney. He served in this position for 24 years. I don't plan on being there 24 years, that's for sure, but, you know, he really, he knows water, you know, and we really came to depend on him, and I hope I can do, you know, half a good of a job as he did. So our current water supply, everyone asked about that, right? Are we in a drought? So I'll just take a couple of minutes to kind of go over where we were. You know, this slide is back from February 5th, so we had about 2.56 inches of rain in the East Bay, to be exact, over the last week, so we've actually added to these totals since then. So what you can see that those first three columns are our reservoir systems, the Pardee, Comanche, and the East Bay system, and then that storage, the AF, it's not something on Twitter, it stands for acre feet. So three acre feet is about 1 million gallons. And for sake of comparison, the average single family, well, four average single-family homes basically count for one acre foot per year. So you guys can do the math and figure out how much we actually have to be ready for. So based on recent rainfall, including last week's rainfall, and our current projections, we are on track in pretty much any scenario, the driest scenario and the wettest scenario for the end of February, March, and April, to end up with our reservoirs full. And you can see they're at 79% of capacity right now. So the good news, again, we still have a few more months left in the rainfall year, and in late April, we end up producing our final water supply report and our projections for next year. So to kind of wrap up, well, within my nine or 10 minutes, you know, as a former council member, somebody who served with many of you and worked in the legislature, I understand the importance of collaboration, working together, and I'm committed to maintaining our strong relationship that, you know, board member Director Linney had with you, and I welcome all open dialogue with this council, city staff, and any residents to ensure that, you know, we meet Alameda's needs now and the future. Our staff is amazing when it comes to responding. You know, we send stuff to our general manager, and he gets back to you pretty quickly, just like you have responsive staff here. So anyone has any questions or problems or issues, please feel free to reach out. Couple upcoming events, March 13th, 11 to 1 over at Alameda College, we're having an award meet and greet, so you can come by and, you know, ask questions, and, you know, you all know me, but if you don't, you can come by. And I'm also honored to attend the mayor's address on the 20th, the state of the city, so that should be fun at Penumbra again. And I just do want to say thanks again for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It's an honor to serve as your representative, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Odie. That was very informative. Council, any questions or comments about this presentation? Did you, so you have a question? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi, Councilmember.
New representative for the East Bay Mud Board. Thank you for coming and sharing information. And I, my question, I have actually two questions. I know that East Bay Mud is separate, that your water treatment facilities are separate from storm drains in, at least in Alameda and in the East Bay Mud District, but my question is, do these, with the rising waters and more severe storms, do these, are there ways that East Bay Mud is addressing the water table and the higher storms and also supporting, working to support the elimination of pollution into the storm drains or into the bay?
Yes, we are.
Go ahead and introduce yourself again for everyone.
Yes, for the purpose, my name is Sun Kwang-si. I'm a community affair representative for East Bay Mud. To answer your question, Councilmember Jensen, so we take the wastewater treatment very seriously, and then we always find ways to improve our water treatment, and then so when we discharge to the bay, it's more environmental friendly, and then we notice there is issue about smell, issue about LG broom, and we have on-site lab to do research on how to improve our wastewater treatment. And if you want more specific answer to it, I probably have to schedule a presentation for you because we want to provide you with the correct information. And also, the other thing is, we upgrade the interceptor is a way for us to improve the collection of the sewage, because we noticed that a few years ago, when there was like very heavy rainfall, sometimes those could be bad, can be overflow, and then that have a potential environmental impact. And then so part of our commitment is to upgrade those facility to meet climate change challenges in the future.
Great, so it sounds like the projects that you've mentioned that were on the slides will all be addressing and improving the East Bay Mud's ability to respond and to support, to eliminate runoff that might pollute the bay.
Yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Councilmember Dayzag.
Yes, you know, I'm sure on so many minds is what had happened in Southern California. Are there any high-level lessons learned regarding, you know, the tragic fires in Southern California and, you know, the relationship between water districts? High-level learnings with regard to the East Bay Mud generally, or particularly if there's anything, you know, that might apply to the City of Alameda?
Yeah, thank you.
We're prepared for that one.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. So a lot of you know that there was a very tragic fire in the Oakland Hills in the 90s, and then we learned a lot from that incident. And so East Bay Mud has been working with local fire district to improve our system. I think one of the main thing that we learned is to standardize the fire hydrants, because one of the issue during that time is different agency use different equipment, and then that create a problem. And so with that in mind, so we are improving those, and we also work closely with those local fire districts to make sure that the mutual aid is working, and then it's like the communication is okay. And then we also have like year-round vegetation management to make sure that in the hill, in our watershed, the vegetation will not pose a fire risk. I think our rangers do prescribe burning when it's needed. And also investment, capital investment is one of the big things that we do, and then we just celebrate our 100th anniversary last year, and then one of the commitment from the district is to improve the infrastructure, to make sure that we can face the challenge for the next 100 years. So that is part of it. I think also we have to do a lot of research on how to better management, the vegetation and other things to prevent fire. I think people also have some concern about fire hydrant because that become a hot issues that the water pressure level will get low, or sometimes people will, they don't know whether or not their fire hydrant on their street is working. So we do work with the fire district, and then we also do repair, and then in the high wildfire area, we have scheduled maintenance to make sure those hydrants are working. But just want to make sure that everybody have in mind is like fire hydrant also work on water pressure, so if there is a very big fire, like the one in LA, no municipal system can handle that, but we do make sure that fire hydrant is working and learn from the mistakes or the lessons from the Oakland Hill fires to make sure that everything is ready.
Great, thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Pryor.
Hello, all right, so I have a question about when it was showing the percentages. Is there like a, like something, I don't know if you guys labeled this, but is there like where it's healthy and, you know, oh, we should be concerned, or, you know, what are those numbers or the benchmarks, so to speak?
Yeah, so if you see our capacity is at full or 100%, it's always a good sign. We don't want too much, we don't want too less. And right now, I think we entered the year with our reservoir near full or at full capacity, so that is a good sign, even though right now the rainfall is a little bit below normal. And we still have a few months for the rain season to end, so I think in April, we will have a thorough assessment of our current reservoir capacity, and then also we'll do a forecast for the year. And then, so at that time, if you check on our website, you can find a little bit more information, but currently with our forecast, I think it will be in a good shape for our reservoirs.
Sure. Just a couple of things added to that, you know, preparing for the drought is a big issue for us, right? So one of the things the previous board did was, you know, you, I like to say you can't just go out and buy water, but we actually did, you know, we actually purchased the Freeport reservoir, so that's kind of our backup in case of a drought. So we have our main reservoirs, and then we have Freeport. We haven't had, yet to tap into it. And, you know, as far as planning goes to your question, Vice Mayor, you know, it's really only the third year of drought where we really start feeling the crunch on our supply. So so far, we're not in a drought now, so that means we at least have another three or four years before it's a major issue, but we're always trying to find new ways because you can't just build, you know, water like you can build housing, right?
So to, just add to Director Odie, so Freeport is our partnership with the Sacramento Delta, so Sacramento River, so when we are in drought, we can purchase water from them and then to our district. And then the good thing for the Freeport facility is we can benefit the farmers as well, so like nowadays, we are not in a drought, the water can be stored and used by farmer through groundwaterers, and also when we, if we needed them, we can import the water to our district for use.
All right. Okay, we'll see in other hands. Thank you both very much for the presentation.
I told you we had great staff.
Thank you. All right, so then we will move on now to item four, which is oral communications, and we will take 15 minutes now at the top of the agenda for in-person comments, and if there are more speakers than we can accommodate in the 15 minutes remaining, speakers may comment under section nine at the end of the regular agenda. So Madam Clerk, do we have comments, public speakers, and if so, how many?
We do, we have five, so they'll get two minutes each, and the first up is Mark Wasberg.
Welcome, Speaker Wasberg.
Is it already on?
We are, welcome.
I'm from Richmond. Last week, you had some people out there protesting for illegal immigrants, these criminals being in my country. And I guess they came up here and asked you for a favor. I hope you don't get no dumb idea of some passing some resolution to banning your police department for forcing federal law, because this is what's been happening with the Democratic cities around the United States. Tom Homer made it perfectly clear, if he catches anybody passing any resolutions or a big hiding criminals from the law, you will be prosecuted, and this is no joke, and he's going to do it. So you better inform your police chief not to do anything stupid, and you people should support our Constitution because you took a note to it to protect the people of the United States against these criminals. So Joe Biden has laid in almost thousands of thousands of criminals into our country. Lake and Riley would have been alive today if that idiot president just opened up the border and let all these criminals come in. So I advise you people to stand up for the Constitution that you took a note for and have a long talk with your police chief, because if he runs into any illegal immigrants on a traffic stop or anything else, he has every right to arrest these people and call ICE to come and get them. So I advise you to stand up for what's right because it's your, it's your obligation to keep the American people safe. And we know for a fact your governor and these other idiots up there in Sacramento are protecting illegal immigrants. I mean, I mean, this is the most sickness thing I've ever seen because they have no right being here, because they come into my country, they are convicted felon, so you better stick to your constitutional duties.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Savannah, cheer.
Welcome, Speaker, cheer.
Yikes. Okay, I'm here tonight to speak to you about a memorial for Mario Gonzalez. I'd like to note that I'm also representing disabled and non-local people, as you no longer take Zoom comments during this part of the agenda. As you probably all know, Mario Gonzalez's family, family advocates and community members have maintained a small altar space near where Mario was killed. Mario was killed in April of 2021 by Alameda Police Department. You've received a recent photo of the space via email, and some of you may even have been there over the past few years yourselves. Advocates have previously met with city staff on this issue, but we were told we needed to wait until legal actions were entirely closed out. And here we are. There are no legal barriers at this point to city staff meeting with Mario's loved ones, family advocates, or the community regarding a memorial. Everyone Belongs Here signs are plastered all around our community. I think we have to acknowledge, you know, however, that maybe the slogan is just aspirational. It's not fully realized, and this is evidenced plainly in Mario's death. Residents called 911 on Mario the day he was killed because he didn't look like he belonged here to them. If you, like me, hope that our community can actually embody the slogan, everyone belongs here, we might be required to acknowledge some natural tension between past harms and future repairs and aspirations. Giving space for reflection, memorializing a life lost too soon, creating a peaceful, contemplative space, none of these are admissions of guilt. They're not policy pronouncements and they're not criticisms. A memorial can simply be a space to breathe and be alive together. And Mario missed that chance. So please consider the role you'll play in either providing or denying that chance to his family and our community at large. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Estella Villagrana.
Welcome, Speaker Villagrana.
So I just ask you, I'm holding the signs to step over to the side or to the back wall so you're not blocking the people behind you. So if you, if you step to the side, that would be great. So you just don't block anyone who's behind you, okay? Everybody wants to see. Just go for the side. And we can still see. Person over here, just move over to the side so you're not blocking anyone's view, please. That was the bit about either standing in the back wall or over to the side.
I don't think she's blocking anybody.
Okay. Ms. Villagrana, I'm going to ask you once. I'm the presiding officer. I would ask one, okay, that is a warning. I do not want to be interrupted while I'm conducting the meeting. Person who is holding this sign, I am going to ask you one more time to go over to the side of the room. You were standing in front of people. Just please go over to the side of the room by the window.
No, no, she can't.
Thank you. So you're not standing. Okay. Mr.
Stop your racist bullshit, Ashcraft.
All right. So I am warning you. And if I have to warn you one more time, I will ask the Alameda Police Officers in this room to escort you out, Mr. Hickman.
I don't think you have any.
Okay. One more step over and you'll be great. That's perfect. Okay. And you serve just a little bit that way. Perfect. Okay. Ms. Villagrana, come on up.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm here seeking for help from council, from city. And I'm not here asking for rent deferment. I'm not here to ask for rent forgiveness. I'm not here for asks for special treatment. I'm here to ask the city, the council for fair rate and the renewal of my list. I'm the owner of Building 43 Winery, and I've been harassed and I'm tired of the retaliation against my business from the city. In front of you, you have the analysis that our broker that we have to hire to do the analysis on the rate among the businesses in Alameda Point. We present that to staff, they ignore it, and we ask for the brokers, the city's brokers' analysis and how the city came out with 120 for square foot in my, to charge that or to put, impose that as a rate for my renewal. I'm available for anybody who want to hear the side of my story from council and please, Madam Mayor, City Manager, and any of the council members that are supporting them, stop the retaliation again, against my business. And for all my Latino community that wanted me to do this bilingual, unfortunately, I don't have enough time. But you're going to see me talking in Univision and Telemundo News pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Gabriel Duncan.
Welcome, Speaker Duncan.
Hello. Thank you for having us. So basically, my name is Gabriel Duncan. I'm the founder of the Alameda Native History Project. Recently, I was doing some research on the water quality around Alameda because I was working on an article to explain why we're not able to process acorns using traditional methods, which generally rely on the availability of fresh, fresh, free flowing water. All I was able to find was information about the impaired waters around Alameda, which there are four of, different parts of the San Francisco Bay, the San Leandro Bay, and the Oakland Inner Harbor. And they're all listed as impaired waterways. And that doesn't explain why we can't use the fresh water, the groundwater that's underneath Alameda. And while I was trying to do the research about the groundwater quality of Alameda, you know, I found a lot of things regarding historical testing and results. But I wasn't able to find any sources of recent data of any recent testing that's been done on Alameda's groundwater. And this made me have some other questions. We have an urban forest plan that just came out where they were able to describe the depth to the water as far as the water table goes underneath Alameda. And it was also, we're also talking about saltwater intrusion into the water that's also underneath Alameda. But there doesn't seem to be any testing that would support either where we are right now as far as saltwater intrusion goes and like the actual depth of the water table underneath Alameda as it stands. So I'm just here to point that out and ask for any help and also just ask if we could start testing our groundwater because I think it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Trish Herrera Spencer.
Welcome, Speaker Herrera Spencer.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Trish Herrera Spencer, former mayor of Alameda. I wanted to speak to actually multiple points. The initial comments, I believe, by the mayor citing the penal code in response to public comment, I believe is intended to deny and inappropriately restrict free, the free exercise of our rights as members of the public to speak at public meetings. I think that's very unfortunate. We do have a right to speak. And I do believe that the First Amendment gives us that right and that the mayor does not have authority to intentionally chill that speech. And so I do encourage members of the public to come on down and speak your opinion that this is your opportunity to speak to the council. Number two I wanted to speak to is that there was recently a Facebook post by, on the city's page, sharing with the public that the city had joined in litigation challenging the recent executive order to limit birthright citizenship. And there were, this was, there were at least 49 comments on the post, and one of which was mine, that asked from five days ago, asking the poster on behalf of the city, what authority did council give to join that litigation? It has not been agendized. Birthright citizenship has not come specifically in front of this council. So when I asked that question, right, there is still no response. Other people have agreed with me, what was the authority to do that? And I see tonight, the legislative agenda is coming in front of this council now to look at the issues. However, even looking at, you will see that term has never been used. I also wanted to support Estella's comments. I think it's very unfortunate that she was, the people holding the signs were, I believe, treated differently than other people.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker.
Todd Hickman.
Welcome, Speaker Hickman.
Thank you.
Well, I'm barely starting my talk. Well, that's typical because, you know, Mayor Ashcraft is full of shit with her free speech analysis and all the other wicked nasty things she does. She should be recalled. As you can see, I sent this to the council members. I don't know that you get your mail, but this talks about the weaponization of our lease and how the staff has used outside counsel to run the bill. This individual unauthorized outside counsel, who I have still yet to speak with, has ran this bill, I believe, to over $50,000 and continues to use this lease as a weapon. She continues to weaponize this lease, which effectively the city staff is trying to turn into a forcible eviction of Building 43. You know, Building 43 is my past. It is my partner's future. A Latina dual citizenship, this is her future. And this city, this racist city council is trying to steal that and take that away. Speaking about this racist city council, do you know that Ms. Estella Villagrana, who doesn't have a speeding ticket, is now being charged in a criminal offense by the Alameda County DA's office? How in the fuck is that? How in the fuck is it that Ms. Villagrana, a perfect law abiding citizen, is being charged as a criminal in the county DA system? Is this your handiwork, baller? I would expect this from you, even Shin, you lowlife piece of shit. I would expect this from your sorry ass. But I mean, the rest of you fucking for real? I mean, for real? As a criminal? What in the fuck is wrong with you people? You exceed all manners of decency. You get what you deserve and free speech is first. So you all fucking get what you deserve for this behavior.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Toni Grimm.
Welcome, Speaker Grimm. And go ahead and bring the microphone to where you need it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes. As a member of the community, I'm often coming to city council, I do respect the rights of free speech. However, I do not like to see that right trampled upon by disrespect. When people address public officials with disrespect, in my opinion, they are disrespecting the people who voted for them. And the people who voted for them are the city of Alameda. And you do not win an argument by swearing at the public officials who have been elected by the majority of the people in Alameda. You don't win your argument that way. In fact, you just embarrass yourself. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
That was our last speaker.
With that, we will close public comment on oral communications. And we will move on to item five, which is the consent calendar. And these are routine items that will be approved by one motion unless council members remove items for discussion. Removed items will be called after the regular agenda is finished. And council members may speak for up to three minutes on any consent calendar items. So first, does council want to pull any consent calendar item? Seeing no hands, I will ask my next question. Does council have any questions on any of the consent calendar items? I feel like a bobblehead. Seeing none, then do we have public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, we have two. So look at three minutes.
Okay.
First is Todd Hickman.
Welcome, Speaker Hickman.
Pleasure to be back at the podium. We got an issue with Building 114. We still don't have a certificate of approval on that street. We're now building buildings where there once was a parking lot and turning a parking lot or a place where there was a building into a parking lot that violates CEQA. So this continues to be an issue. Trying to change the way business is conducted for public comment. This is just more of Mayor Ashcraft's agenda, trying to deprive the people of their First Amendment and their voice. I mean, I know, I know, Mayor Ashcraft, you don't like that picture of you and the DONGs and the criminal enterprise and what it implies about you and your ethics. But facts are facts. You hang out with the DONGs. The picture shows that. So just suck it up and take it. You know, that is a picture of you and the criminal enterprise. The same thing that stung the mayor of Oakland. It's coming. I hear the FBI knocking. San Leandro, Oakland, what's right in between? Alameda, how sweet is that? I love the FBI. I can't wait till they get here. We're close. We're close. So again, this new resolution to try and shortcut the people of Alameda so they have less and less time to get their comments in, to get their public comments. And I mean, again, city council, what is so scary about the public and free speech? I mean, it's only scary when you continue to do the wrong thing and try and deprive the people of their free speech. When you continue to do very, very dirty things and violate the law, you know, do things such as hire outside counsel without having meetings and setting spending limits and doing all the things you're supposed to do. When you hide behind these meetings, you hide behind procedure. I mean, you can't win anything on the facts of the argument. You try and win everything by procedural errors by the public because they don't know how the game works. I mean, it's just so tragic for the people. And I really do feel sorry for the people that think they voted for good people and don't realize who it is they actually voted for. I think the council as a whole is good here. I think we do have some hope for change. I think really, we only have one bad apple on the council. And I think that she just manipulates and threatens everybody into her agenda. So I urge you to vote against 5E. And again, now we have the Astro. I fully support Astro in the deal, but why is it so drastically different than the deal for a small business owner Latina? I mean, a bunch of white males in a big company get the sweetest deal on the planet. And yet, a small business owning Latina, they try and double her rent and weaponize her lease and then file criminal charges against her? I mean, what is going on in this?
Our next speaker. Our next speaker. Mr. Hickman, stop talking and sit down.
Ashcraft, tell the people.
Okay. Officers, please remove this man from the chambers.
Oh, do I get to be cuffed? Forcibly removed?
He is disrupting this meeting. And as the presiding officer, I ask you to please remove Mr. Todd Hickman from the city council chambers.
For exercising my free speech?
And we'll take just a minute while you. And Madam Clerk, who is our next public speaker?
Trish Herrera Spencer.
Welcome, Councilmember Herrera Spencer, former Councilmember Herrera Spencer, our next speaker. I'm not asking for an arrest. I'm just asking that he be removed. Okay. And we're not going to start with the public speaker until this disturbance is ended. Tell you what, everyone in the chambers, let's vacate and let the officers do what they're doing. I'm going to call a five-minute recess. If everyone could come in and take your seat, we want to get started again?
Yes.
Okay, so I think everybody's in. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask our police chief, Nishant Joshi, if he would please give us an update on the current status of the meeting. Welcome, Chief Joshi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Ashcraft and members of city council. Just as a reminder to all attendees of this city council meeting, that the penal code is clear that no disruptions should occur. Anything, anyone that disrupts a public meeting is in violation of the law. We have provided an admonishment and a warning, and it is our understanding that no further disruptions will happen. If further disruptions do happen, we will take additional action.
This evening, all right. All right, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's resume with our speaker. Thank you, Chief.
Trish Herrera Spencer.
Welcome back, Councilmember, Speaker Herrera Spencer.
Good evening. I wanted to speak to item five E, which amends the rules of order specifically in regards to when the public can submit written correspondence and also to council and to the city clerk, and also when they can submit pictures that they want to use during agenda items. And there's a deadline, if I'm reading it correctly, of the day before noon to do that. And I want to actually, I'm, I would be agreeable to having that be a guideline, but I think it's, I would not support it being a hard stop. Why? Because these are the public meetings. Many people, for whatever reason, don't necessarily get to the agenda in advance. Like, we just had a three-day weekend. Was the cutoff yesterday on the holiday at noon under this? Or would it, when would it have been? Would it have been Friday at noon? And I think that needs to be clarified so that the public knows, and I hope it will be clarified in such a manner as to give the public as much time as possible to weigh in on these meetings. Now, in regard, and what we've said in the past, what council has said in the past, is that, and I want to thank the city clerk and her office. They've done really a lot of work to support that, that, you know, we know, the public knows, if you submit it late, it may or may not get attached and shared with everyone, but it's not a hard line, a hard time like that. The pictures is different to me because, if you all know, this table in front of me, we used to have that hooked up, and we could bring, the public would bring, a hard copy like anything and set it down on that table, and it would flash up on the screen to share. And we would do, that was technology back then, and obviously, we don't use it now because we've had advances in technology that allow us to email it or text it to the clerk, and then she can share it. And so, you know, we didn't have to bring the paper 24 hours before the meeting back, back right before this technology. Technology is actually supposed to help encourage and help facilitate productive communication or participation, not actually go backwards. And so I, I do believe that this restriction of you must submit your pictures 20, by noon the day before, whatever that turns out to be, is actually furthering to reduce participation. But also, how do we know the clarifying questions of you all? We don't know. And we are allowed to bring our picture right then to respond to your clarifying question right then and not be restricted. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Oh, okay. So we will close public comment on the consent calendar, and we will go to council comments. Any council comments? Or a motion to approve the consent calendar? Who was that? Councilmember Jensen, okay.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor. Any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. The, that item passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we now move on to the fun stuff. The first regular agenda item is a happy one. I mean, they're all happy. What am I saying? But, what, Madam Clerk, would you please introduce item seven A?
Adoption of resolution appointing Nicholas DeVries as a member of the Public Utilities Board.
All right. And so, council, this is, I think it's Nicholas DeVries.
DeVries, sorry, sorry. He just told me to.
Yeah. And when, assuming that he's approved and sworn in, he will tell you about his, I hope he tells you about his impressive background, but he is an engineer by profession, which is a charter requirement that our public utility board, which administers overseas AMP, our public utility, electric public utility, always have one engineer member. And our most recent engineer recently stepped down after a long term of service. So I was delighted to have three extremely capable engineers applying. It was a difficult decision that Mr. DeVries was selected. So what I'm looking for is a motion to approve this resolution appointing Nicholas DeVries as a member of the Public Utilities Board. I'll look to the, my right-hand side. So that motion, that motion is made by Councilmember Greg Bowler, seconded by, Councilmember Dayslug, you want a second?
Oh, sure.
I said I'm looking to the right side of the, that's you. All right. Moved by Bowler, seconded by Dayslug. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Of course not. All right, so Nicholas DeVries, please come on up to have the city clerk, Laura Weisiger, administer the oath of office.
I will do that. Oh, it's really quickly. If you'll raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the officers you're about to enter?
I do.
Thank you.
It's good you didn't have to repeat anything. Welcome to the Public Utility Board. As I tell the applicants when they're interviewing, with this, this action, you are magically transformed from an applicant to a full-fledged member of the Public Utilities Board, ready to vote at the next meeting. When is the next meeting?
Oh, it's third week, third Monday of next month.
You got time. All right. Well, welcome, and we'd love to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. Well, and a mayor, city council members, members of staff, and the member of public. My name is Nick DeVries. I am, live on Versailles. For those of you tracking the issue, most of us on the street now call it Versailles, but I understand that it's a hot topic here in the city, and we use both words in my family. My family is here today with me. I'm a mechanical engineer. I graduated with a degree in bachelor, a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering, as well as a commission in the U.S. Army. Served for five years as an infantry officer before returning home to the Bay Area, marrying my wife, and then choosing to live in Alameda. We chose Alameda for the schools. We chose it again 10 years later to buy a bigger house because of the community, the people, the parks, the schools, the city that works, but most of all because of the city's values. In those years I've lived here in Alameda, I'm an engineer. I focused on solar energy and making it a mainstream source of electric generation. Today, it is the fastest-growing source of electric generation in the nation, not because it's clean, not because of the ideals, because it's reliable, it works, and it's affordable. In this same time, I've got to learn to respect AMP and our utility because it is also reliable, affordable, and Alameda Municipal Power has set the bar across the nation for 100% clean energy. Not one source of energy, not my favorite, solar, but multiples. So I now, as a commissioner, have to see, how do we maintain that? It has been through hard work. It just doesn't happen after a proclamation, but decades of good decisions. So as a commissioner, I think of how do I help lead the utility through a growing city, a growing electric base, and continue this, this high bar of excellence that people before me have already set. I'll last maybe just say a minute about service. My thoughts on service have been informed by Boy Scouts, through the Sunday School, the church, my time in the Army, but most importantly, from my wife. My wife has been a leader in volunteering for the schools and early on showed me what it takes to be a leader and participate in the city, and that someone has to do it. People can have lots of ideas, but some, at some point, someone has to step forth as a, as a volunteer, community organizer, or an elected official to actually move forward and do things. So I say to her, thank you for setting this example, and to our daughter, I listened to mom's advice, and here I am, helping to serve the city as a Public Utilities Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and welcome to the PUB. I thank you very much. All right, let's move on to item seven B. Madam Clerk, will you introduce that item, please?
Public hearing to consider adoption resolution approving a 24-month exclusive negotiating agreement with Pacific Fusion with options to extend for a total of 33 months for potential development of a 12- to 18-acre property along Orion Street between West Pacific Avenue and West Ticonderoga Avenue at Alameda Point for a research and development facility. This action is not subject to further environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act guideline section 15378 and on separate independent basis sequel guideline section 15183.
And Ms. Thorne Lyman, before you start, I understand that you would like a total of 15 minutes for the entire presentation. Is that enough?
Yes, I would appreciate that. I would like part of that time to go towards Pacific Fusion to speak on their own behalf.
And you can divide it up any way you want.
Thank you.
But so what I need from the council is, it's really just five minutes, but we have to have a vote of at least four members. I think we'll get five. So could someone make a motion, please, to add five minutes to item seven B, staff report? Okay, it's moved by Vice Mayor Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Dayslug. No discussion, right? Okay, all those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you've got 15 minutes to divvy up any way you want. Welcome. And go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Abby Thorne Lyman. I'm the Director of Base Reuse and Economic Development for the city, and I'm here tonight to bring, bring to you a motion to consider entering into an exclusive negotiating agreement with a company called Pacific Fusion to contemplate development in an area that we, is known as the Enterprise District. The Enterprise District is a subset of Alameda Point that is generally south of West Atlantic Avenue. It's roughly at 100 acres that in the Alameda Point zoning ordinance and EIR was envisioned to be Alameda Point's job-generating new development area. And this map on the right is showing the zoning map. And this map on the right is showing the zoning map. It shows 1, 2, 3, and 4, and those are the zoning areas. And all except for the little 3 that is along Central Avenue and Main Street do not allow for residential development. Truly, the intent here is to have a job generating new development. This is a very large area, and it's very constrained because, as with the rest of Alameda Point, we are in need of a major new infrastructure replacement throughout the area. And as well, as you all can imagine, post-COVID, the idea of getting a major employer in to develop a new campus or anchor facility is challenging. And so, as we discussed back in October, which I'll get to in a second, really, the intent here is to be more opportunistic with the kind of developers or businesses that might come our way and understand that we can't just issue a competitive RFP and assume that there, there are, you know, dozens of developers waiting in the wings to build a new R&amp;D campus or biotech campus or office facility. I'll talk a little bit about the location of the, of the proposal and why it is in that area. But I do just want to say that we have attempted three times to develop this area since the zoning and EIR were adopted back in 2014, most recently in 2019, when we did go through a competitive process and we had a lot of developers lined up. It was a very different time economically and physically. We ran into a number of hurdles, including changes to the state law, Surplus Land Act, as well as the presence of Terry refinery waste, which we have now identified ways to overcome. Last year, we did reinvigorate the process to find a developer for this area. And that started with a study session with the Mayor's Economic Development Advisory Panel back in August, followed by a study session with City Council. We discussed this area that is shown in green on the right-hand side as being a great area to start new development. It is bounded by Pacific, Orion, and Ticonderoga, and this being a good area because it connects and creates a new East Bay mud loop, which is really critical. And it's the whole of the donut, right? Once we get this new backbone infrastructure, it actually is going to be easier for us to build in the areas around. In December subsequently, we did receive a proposal from Pacific Fusion for development of this area, and we held a closed session in January to discuss this with, with council. And I am returning now from that. So Pacific Fusion is a new company that is trying to innovate in the great race towards creating a scalable energy solution, clean energy solution, using the process of nuclear fusion. And because I am not a nuclear physicist, I'm going to leave it to them to explain what nuclear fusion is to the community. They have been very successful in raising money to create a demonstration facility, which is what they are interested in building, either in Alameda or perhaps another location. They're looking to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city so that they can commence the entitlement process and negotiate a term sheet while they're running that process in parallel with other communities and intend to make a decision in the middle of this year. Pacific Fusion is not a developer, and so they have partnered with one, and they've partnered with Heinz. Heinz is a, is a global real estate development company that has done quite a few projects in the Bay Area. They, they build in all different uses, including industrial and R&amp;D, as well as residential. And they can tell you a whole lot more about themselves. And so, Heinz is not the signatory to this ENA. It's Pacific Fusion. Pacific Fusion is the one who is, who will be obligated to deliver on the obligations in this agreement. However, Heinz will play a very prominent role, and so they are here tonight as well. So staff are here to recommend this exclusive negotiating agreement because we, we really believe it is consistent with the vision that we've had for Alameda Point and in particular for the Enterprise District since 2014. We've been looking for a major anchor tenant to come in who could develop a new job generating campus, and indeed, that is what Pacific Fusion has proposed. Because they are in the clean energy sector and really trying to innovate in clean energy and find a scalable solution to clean energy, they are truly in support of the city's sustainability goals, and they support the city's economic development strategic plan as they are in one of our priority sectors. It also is a really unique opportunity. As we discussed, it's important to be opportunistic in this, to get a job generating major development. And we are in a very slow and, I might say, unusual economic cycle right now with a lot of uncertainty. And so, it's very exciting that they've come to us with this proposal, and it will be generating jobs. They anticipate roughly 250 jobs. And lastly, they have proposed their development in this area, the, the whole of the donut. And that really will help us catalyze the next future phases of new development in this area. They're going, they will be building out the backbone infrastructure that actually could support adjacent development in the future. So to give you a little overview of what's in the exclusive negotiating agreement, first I just want to take a step back and, and explain what an ENA or exclusive negotiating agreement is. This is us both as partners dipping our toe in the water to see if this development makes sense. So there's very little commitment on the part of the city, very little commitment on the part of the developer, but it's our way of establishing a relationship where we can start to explore if this is going to work for, for all of us. So on our end, it's us agreeing that we will be exclusive with them. We, we aren't going to negotiate with others for this particular piece of property during this time period. For them, it's them saying, okay, we're going to pursue, we're going to do our due diligence on this site. Does this make sense? Do you want to entitle this? They'll, they'll be concurrently going through the entitlement process and the real estate negotiation process with us. So we're not committing today to doing this development. We're committing to having conversations and conducting further due diligence needed to decide if this is a good idea. So I just want to walk through the graphic on the right here. This is the exhibit to the ENA. And you can see, it's, it's a little cartoony, and I just want to acknowledge that. And that's because we don't quite know where the bounds of Phase 1 and Phase 2 will be. Phase 1, which would be their initial demonstration facility, their R&amp;D facility, would be on the western side of this block, this super block that is bounded by West Pacific Avenue, Orion Street, and West Ticonderoga Avenue. So it would generally be in that location. They would be submitting a proposal to the Planning, Building, and Transportation Department that would go through the standard city entitlement process for that area. They would have 12 months to both complete that entitlement process and negotiate a successful term sheet with the city for possible sale of this land. That is the time period for which we are bound to exclusively negotiate with Pacific Fusion. Now, if they are successful in that, then we have discussed this Phase 2, which is the area to the eastern area, to the east, that is bound on the eastern side by Central Avenue. And then we kind of will need to work on, through the entitlement process, on exactly what the western bound will be. Like, we need to actually see what their building is going to look like. So Phase 2, they would be given an additional 12 months to negotiate a purchase option with us. So if they are not successful with Phase 1, they will not be pursuing Phase 2. Now, one of the unique things about this site that you'll see in orange is that there is a piece of property that has not yet been conveyed by the Navy. So this is property that we do lease to a storage facility under our lease and furtherance of conveyance with the Navy. But what we have established in this ENA document is that that is not part of the ENA. It just doesn't seem appropriate for us to be putting land we don't own into an ENA that's about selling the land. So we just need to let Phase 2 play out. So Pacific Fusion has certain steps they are obligated to complete during this process, as do we. So they, we would, they would be submitting, and we would be reviewing a development plan and just undergoing the entitlement process. We would negotiate the terms of a possible sale of land. They would be conducting other due diligence on the site. One of the biggest things that's, that we have to handle on this site, as I mentioned, is the presence of Terry refinery waste. Chevron is obligated to clean that up, and we are working on a remediation plan with Chevron right now. And so, we will be aggressively pushing that, that process forward to make sure that is not a barrier to this development. Then the developer has another, a number of other obligations. So what we've included in the exclusive negotiating agreement is a community engagement plan. So we understand that the concept of nuclear fusion is probably pretty scary, and so we would like them to do some community engagement. And so, that's, that's a process we'll have to do. And, and we will be looking at their financial ability to undertake the project.
Five minutes left.
Okay, better. So the preliminary project terms will yet to be negotiated, but essentially, we would be receiving a package of infrastructure in exchange for the land. They have, are working under an accelerated timeline for completion of this facility. So I think I mentioned we'll be simultaneously doing both processes. And I think I'm just going to turn it right over to them.
That's good. All right. Come on up and introduce yourself, speakers from Pacific Fusion. Good evening. And go ahead and make that microphone right where you need it, and introduce yourself, please.
Testing, testing. Can you hear me?
Do you need water?
What?
Do you need water?
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. But speaking to the microphone, please.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers and staff, thank you so much for having us here today. To briefly introduce ourselves, I'm Carrie. I'm one of the co-founders of Pacific Fusion and our COO. I'm here with Keith LaSheen, one of our co-founders and our CTO. Keith has spent the last 20 years of his career safely designing and building fusion systems and is the primary architect of our technical roadmap, as well as in charge of all technical operations. So he's the right person to direct many of your safety questions to over the course of the evening. Also present are Courtney Richardson, who leads our infrastructure engineering work, and Alex Doniak, who leads communications and community relations.
A little closer to the microphone.
I wish.
Can you hear you better?
Is this better?
It is better.
Okay. We're so glad to be here. It's the little left button?
Yes.
Okay. Um, oh, just the little, this thing? This one? Okay. To briefly introduce the company, we were founded in 2023 with a clear goal to power the world with abundant and affordable clean energy. Last year, we raised a little more than $900 million in private capital. We're now ahead of schedule on our technical milestones and have a number of important decisions ahead of us in 2025, top of that list being where we'll build our long-term research and development headquarters. And we're here today because we're really excited about the prospect of building in Alameda. First, we think there is incredible mission alignment, a sense which has only been affirmed to date by our conversations with the CASA team and many in the community. In particular, our conversations with staff have been really helpful, and we've been thoroughly grateful for the collaborative attitude that will let us work on this together, hopefully, if the council decides to proceed with an ENA over the next many months. Second, in making a citing decision, we're choosing a place where our rapidly growing team will go to work every day. This influences who we hire. This influences who we become as a business, and we're really excited about the talent base in Alameda. This project would represent a billion-dollar scale investment in the community and as such would bring at least 250 permanent jobs to Alameda, plus hundreds more to the region when you consider all the construction work and supporting services required to make the project successful. We'd also invest, as Abby mentioned directly, in infrastructure and environmental projects that benefit not just us, but also the local business community. And finally, as I mentioned earlier, an investment in a site for us is also an investment in our future talent base. We're still early in defining what educational partnerships could look like, but conversations to date with President Dixon at the College of Alameda, with board member Jennifer Williams and Dr. Walton at the Alameda Unified School District, and many others, leave us really hopeful that Alameda would be the right place to invest in growing and building that talent base. I'll talk momentarily about the facility we're building, but thought it might be worth very briefly providing some context on fusion. Fusion is what powers the sun and our stars, and it's been the holy grail of energy for 50 years because it's safe, clean, available on demand, and fuel is nearly free. The challenge is that the research community has spent the last 50 years figuring out how to burn fusion fuel. Conceptually, it's pretty simple. You take like atoms, in our case, hydrogen, confine them under enormous temperature and pressure so that they fuse and release energy. In reality, creating those conditions is a really challenging engineering, engineering challenge, and any disruption to those conditions halts the reaction, making fusion relatively safe with no potential for runaway or meltdown. The demonstration system that we hope to build in Alameda is a research facility, much like the National Ignition Facility, the largest fusion facility in the world, right up the road. Being brief here, eyeing the clock. Happy to talk more in Q&amp;A about what the actual...
Let me just pause, pause the clock for a minute. If you all think you need another five minutes, I thought 15 was a little ambitious for all you had to impart. I do believe this council would be amenable to giving you another five minutes, wouldn't we, council?
Yes, I move that we give them five more minutes.
Look at that. It's a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bowler for another five minutes of time. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That was unanimous. Okay. So go right ahead and...
Madam Mayor, we'll just clarify. We, we'll let the clock run down, and then we'll add five after.
Exactly.
Thanks.
Yeah, we got the higher math. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Appreciate it.
Please proceed. Take a deep breath.
As I mentioned, the system we hope to build in Alameda is a research facility, much like the National Ignition Facility. It is not a power plant. Very practically speaking, it would have no noise or vibrational impacts on the community. And conceptually, the way it works is fairly simple. A lot of the footprint are capacitor banks that store electrical energy represented in this photo by the cylinders. They create a large electric current which is used to drive a small can of fusion fuel about the size of a pencil eraser to fusion conditions so that the hydrogen inside fuses and releases energy. And the actual fusion is confined to a very, very small portion of the facility. Here, a small section of the water tank that you can see in front of you. Oh, wrong way. Forgive me. There is nothing more important to us than safety as we build this facility. Because radiological materials are commonly used for research and medical purposes, and because we build on many decades of history safely building and operating fusion facilities, we are, we're really blessed that we can borrow a lot of those best practices and also lean on the regulatory framework developed by the state of California. In order to be in operations with tritium at our facility, very practically, we'll need to obtain a license from the state of California's Department of Public Health Radiological Materials Branch, just like any hospital or research facility that, like us, uses small amounts of radiological material for its research. This license will regulate all aspects of our operations, including transportation and storage of these materials and all handling of waste. And again, we imagine you'll have many questions here, and we're glad to spend more time on this in the Q&amp;A. In closing, I just want to reiterate our thanks to many of you in this room who've taken the time to get to know us so far. Transparency and community engagement really matter to us, and we're still early in this process. So if the council decides tonight to proceed with an ENA, as Abby mentioned, we'll prepare a community engagement plan in collaboration with the city, and we really don't want to do this in a vacuum. So we really hope to hear with, hear from you. Please reach out with questions, feedback, and ideas anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Keith, did you have anything you wanted to add? Because you have time on the clock.
Thank you. Yeah, four minutes. No, thank you so much. We're very excited to be here, very excited for this opportunity and to engage with you. As Abby mentioned, you know, this is the beginning of a, a process, and so there's lots of opportunity to, to iterate and, and get to know each other, answer questions. We want to make sure that all members of the community feel heard, that we answer all the questions of the council. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. So, Council, do you have any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? I'll save mine for after public comment. Oh, Councilmember Dayslug, go ahead.
Clarifying question. So obviously, safety is important. Is there like an industry standard or some kind of certificate, independent certification board, I don't know, that establishes what constitutes the highest of best use, of best practices when it comes to constructing? Like, there's like that whole ISO numbers that, so if you were to construct a facility, is there, could we as a council or planning board turn to some kind of body separate from yours to say, this is what best practice is, and we can kind of compare how you come close to it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's excellent question. So there are a couple of different elements to that. At, at one level, we're building an R&amp;D facility, and of course, that's susceptible...
You're just speaking to the microphone.
Yes, yeah, sorry about this. We're, we're constructing an R&amp;D facility, and this requires all of the natural entitlement and permitting process that goes into, you know, constructing such facilities in California and within the city of Alameda. But above that, of course, this facility does contain radiological material, much like research facilities or hospitals. And those facilities, if they're not owned by the federal government, are licensed through the California Department of Public Health, through the Radiological Materials Branch. There are standards that they set within, within that branch that is in Sacramento to, you know, make sure that people operate these types of research facilities safely. And this includes a full life cycle of the facility. There's, just goes for how much material you can have, how it's operated, how you protect workers and the public, all the way through the decommissioning of a facility. You have to have all of these steps lined up at the outset of obtaining this license. This licensure process takes roughly a year to two years. This licensure process takes roughly a year to two years. It kind of depends upon exactly the complexities of a given project. We're intending to submit our initial application to the state later this year in 2025. We wouldn't have radiological materials in this facility until about 2029. So we've got lots of time to iterate both with, with this community as well as the state. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission also controls certain aspects of how you, materials are handled. And so there are interfaces there that we also have to establish throughout this process as well. That's with the federal government. We had, the particular radioisotope that we use is called tritium. This is supplied and controlled by the Department of Energy. So that's another interface that we have in this whole process as we come together as an operating fusion facility. To that end, we have deep relationships with both Sandia National Laboratories and Lawrence Livermore National Laboratories, both of which we have cooperative research and development agreements with. We have lots of technical interactions with these institutions. But all of this is to say that we're working both the aspects within the federal government, the state government, local governments, to make sure that this is brought safely to the community.
Okay, two more, two more questions. Again, on safety, so again, I'm not a scientist, you know, I just listen to a podcast. So it appeared, my understanding is, so when you put a laser against hydrogen, then it kind of releases the energy, and one of the things that's released is neutrons, and it's the neutrons that are radioactive, right? So the question is, correct me if I'm wrong, by the way. So the question is, should it get out into the air, get beyond, outside of the facility? I mean, at what level do we have to be concerned?
Yep.
And, and how long would it live in the air?
It, it's a good question, and this is, and this is why it's really excellent that we have lots of time to iterate and bring everyone up to speed. There's a couple of, if you jump into the middle of a conversation on fusion, you can sort of pick up lots of different pieces and, and, you know, get a little bit turned around as to what is, what you're tracking. In the case of a fusion facility, so neutrons are not radioactive themselves. What, in a fusion reaction, you produce a neutron that leaves this reaction. And that neutron then is, in a facility that's designed to be, produce fusion, is then built into a, you know, shielded vessel that doesn't allow any neutrons to escape. In fact, it's impossible to do so. And it's one of the inherent safety features of the design here that we don't have time to get into today, every single aspect of that design. But the neutrons themselves are not radioactive. Where you can get into, what can happen is neutrons can deposit energy into materials like stainless steel or metals within a very small, short distance of where they're created. Short distance being within a few feet of where they're created. And then those materials can become activated, at which point those materials then have to be handled, again, appropriately with licensure procedures and disposed of and tracked in a way that's consistent with, with the materials license that you obtain from the state.
Okay, so is there any, setting aside neutrons, is there any form of, I don't know what the right term is, elements or whatever that can get radioactive, that can get emitted into the air, or that can go into the groundwater below? And so, again, what levels would we have to be concerned about? And would you build to safeguard against?
Yes, one of the, and Carrie showed this in one of the images that we, that we brought today. But a fusion reaction in our type of system occurs in a very, very small physical volume, the size of the end of a pencil eraser. This is where all the fusion is produced. In our system there, there's a couple million gallons of water that then shield out roughly 50 feet in all directions, more or less, in order to shield those neutrons, as well as any other radiation that's, might be produced in that, in the, in the reaction. And all of that then, from the perspective of the site boundary, this is another, one of these terms that we'll begin to define and iterate with the council on to make sure that's clear what we're talking about. The site boundary then is where members of the public can sort of approach up to in, in our facility. That's the boundary at which you define what is, through NRC guidelines, what's an acceptable, you know, level of exposure to the public. And in our case, that's zero at the site boundary by design. That's one of the features of how we design the system. And that's one of the areas that we'll, you know, get to introduce and describe in great detail in the coming months.
Okay. One last question, even though I said two. The last question is, so suppose you decide 10 years from now, you've bought the place, you've built it up, but then, like the Oakland Raiders, you decided to go to Las Vegas. So you move. So how does that then affect some new user, and let's say they're not in your industry? Would that then preclude many industries from then reoccupying that site? How does that work?
Yeah, it's, that's an excellent question, and it's, of course, as a startup, something we're very, you know, very keep track of on these kinds of things. The wonderful thing about the requirements to attain a radiological materials license in the state of California is you have to have a full decommissioning plan at the outset. This plan sets specific requirements for the company, including things like setting money aside in escrow to deal with any decommissioning that might be required as a, as a, you know, point of having that license. And all of this is, again, this is a major, major part of a licensure process, actually, in order to make sure that when, if a company were to evolve or, or move on to another project, that, that facility can be decommissioned safely, and it can be used for any other use after that. So no, there's, there's no, there's nothing that restricts future use of the site, per se.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, prior.
I think I know the answer to this question, so I hope, I hope the answer is good. So you guys have two other facilities, and you had just mentioned that you do work with other similar companies to share stuff. But what, have you had any work-related, like radioactive incidents or accidents? Or have, you know, any of the other companies that are similar to yours have, like, what is the track record or?
Yeah, yeah, so we have two other facilities outside of the one we're talking about here. A third, actually, soon to come online. We have the Fremont, Pacific Fusion Fremont Test Center. This is where we build electrical equipment and some of the non-fusion elements of our system to develop the technology and do technology risk reduction. So when we build the full demonstration system, we know that it'll work. That's in Fremont. In Livermore, we have a collaboration office to be close to the laboratory. This is just an office. We're in the process of obtaining a site in San Leandro, that's our build center, where we'll actually build the components that will ultimately find their way into this demonstration system so we can build them concurrently with the facility construction. And then, of course, this facility we're talking about here. Within Pacific Fusion, and we've been operational since summer of 2023, we've had, you know, an outstanding record of safe operations. This is something that I pride myself on at, at the Department of Energy, where I spent seven years running fusion programs for the Department of Energy. I was a senior technical safety manager. This is a role, that's a formal role, that, you know, provides guidance and advice and oversees of projects that include fusion and other nuclear activities. So in, in addition to, you know, raw lab safety, high voltage, these kinds of systems that keeping them very safe for workers, and of course, the public as they might interface with, with such a facility. So Pacific Fusion has an outstanding track record of, of safety today, yes.
So in answer to the Vice Mayor's question, there have been no safety-related incidents-
Correct.
-at any of your facilities?
Correct, yes.
Go ahead. Was there anything else, Vice Mayor?
Oh, and this was more of a, a technical question, but on one of your, sorry, you were, the, the two, I'm tired, but I'm not going to remember them, but they were the two elements. And, and I, and this was under the frequently asked questions, I believe, and you had talked about half-life. And I was wondering what the, saying it was a very short half-life, and I was like, well-
What does that mean?
Yeah, no, I mean, because I studied geology, so I was like, short, like geologically short, or, yeah.
I asked that question, too.
Yes, right, that's very important. It's short, the, the half-life of tritium is about 12 years.
Okay.
This is short compared to something like carbon-14, that's over 5,500-year half-life, so it's very short. Half-life is the time at which the half of the mass of that particular material has decayed. And so, so yeah, very short, and with respect to things that we're familiar with, like carbon-14. The two elements you're referring to are deuterium and tritium. Deuterium is found in seawater. Tritium is something that, for the purposes of doing tests in our R and D facility, we obtained from the Department of Energy. And that's, that is the governing, that's the item for which we go to get the radiological materials license for tritium, yes.
Any further? No, thank you. I've got a couple of questions, and thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up? You go, you go next. Councilmember Bowler, yes, please.
Oh, thanks so much. With the tritium, is it correct that that is not a focus of the first, maybe, five years of the project, as I understood it? And why is that? If you could explain a little bit about that?
Yeah, yes, okay, so it turns out when you're commissioning a fusion facility, you could actually learn a heck of a lot about how it operates without introducing tritium. You could use just simply deuterium. And this is, this is a common practice that's done to commission fusion facilities and government facilities. So what our, our plans are today would be, the site in Alameda would be planned to be developed so we could take occupancy in mid-2027. For the first roughly two years, 18 months to two years, we would operate without any tritium in the facility. And again, this is about commissioning a facility, bringing it online. It's a first-of-a-kind technology, right? So bringing it up, making sure we understand how the system operates, making sure that we can get it to a state of routine operations before introducing tritium into the facility in 2029.
And then I also just had a question about the, sort of the, the capital raising that you've done with venture capital. It's, I mean, it appears like there's some information about this that's public, and there's some major venture, venture capital firms that are part of this. Could you describe a little bit about that? And it seems like perhaps there is a fairly rapid result that you're able to achieve with this? And what is that, does, is it the company's belief that that's because of something particular about your technology? Or how would you describe the significance of that success and where this positions you going forward? Because obviously, it's, it's a good sign that a lot of, you know, pretty significant investors are looking at this.
Yeah, sure. So we set out, I guess maybe a little history of our fundries, and then can share a little bit more about what it means for the company. We founded this company in 2023, building on two major breakthroughs that in our minds, for the first time, opened a clear path to affordable fusion power. First, scientists at the NIF at the National Ignition Facility in Livermore demonstrated ignition, proving the conditions required for high-gain fusion. And then, second, Keith, among others, invented breakthrough impulse power that gives us a much more affordable and practical way to reach those conditions. And so to us, for the first time, there was an actually tractable path to not just net energy gain, but affordable fusion power. And we knew, based on the Scientific and Engineering Foundation that we built on, that we were going to need about a billion dollars to demonstrate net facility gain and show a clear path to producing commercial fusion systems. And we also knew, as a young startup with a great team of five people, that it would possibly be much easier to find the first 100 million than the next nine, right? We saw that again and again in Clean Tech 1.0. Startup would get funded, but you couldn't do things like plan for a facility that takes years to construct if you don't have a clear and reliable line of sight to the capital that will fund you. So we ended up borrowing a financing model that I, who was, I was working for one of our lead investors at the time, had seen work well, where you collect commitments for the entire amount of capital that you need to achieve a clear set of milestones upfront. And then you call that capital as intermediate milestones are achieved. And it's a really exciting model for the field, because obviously, for investors, one of the biggest risks if you back a company is that the person is not there to write the next check. And obviously, for a company, if you have your leadership team constantly fundraising and always sort of waiting to see where the next dollar is going to come from, it's really hard to do big ambitious projects that require real planning. And we were, I think, really humbled and grateful that an amazing syndicate came together to back us. It's about half institutional investors, half company builders, individual investors. On our board are Eric Schmidt, former chairman of Google, Patrick Collison, founder of Stripe, and Haymont, the CEO of General Catalyst. So again, good mix of company builders and folks with institutional experience. We have VCs who had not historically backed fusion, like General Catalyst and Lightspeed. We have folks who've been doing fusion for a very long time, like Lower Carbon and Breakthrough Energy Ventures, John Dore, among others. And now, we're resourced to deliver with the best syndicate we could ask for. So to your question about what does it mean, it means we can plan. It means we can actually execute quickly, which would be really hard to do if we were pursuing a more traditional financing model.
And if I may, just, just how does that compare with the competitors from what we know in terms of public information? Like, how, where does Pacific Fusion sit right now competitively in this, in this endeavor to create, you know, sustainable fusion technology?
Yeah, so you're obviously talking to folks with a clear perspective, given that we're here building this company. I mean, I think there are a lot of different ways to answer this question, and there are a lot of different people in the field who will give you different opinions. I can share why we are all doing this, and Keith, who's been in this field far longer than I can, can pile on. You know, I think when you're considering the competitive positioning of a fusion approach, there are really two big questions to ask, or three big questions to ask. The first is, what is the scientific basis that you build on? How far are you from the scientific finish line? The second is, do you have a tractable path to deliver affordable power? You know, what techno-economic moonshots also need to occur in order to have your technology scale in the world? And then, third, are you resourced to deliver, both financially and with a team to deliver? In our case, we build on the number one and number two highest performing fusion approaches, which have only been so for the last couple of years, would not have been possible in 2018, for example. We believe we have the clearest and most tractable engineering path to affordable power, and we have the best syndicate any company could ask for. There are a couple other fusion companies out there that also build on well-founded science, but have various real engineering challenges to deliver affordable power. There are a couple of fusion companies out there that have really clever engineering solutions, but have sort of farther to go on the scientific side, or at least have published less about their work. So anyway, we have a really, we're, we're high conviction that our path makes a lot of sense. But, you know, again, many people in the field will give you different perspectives, so it's worth talking to a lot of people if you're looking to orient. Anything you'd add?
No, that was very well-rounded.
I wish you'd be a tough act to follow. I've got just a few questions. I'll start with a short one. Why Alameda?
Yeah, I mean, it's been kind of an interesting journey as we've oriented to different places that we could build and have gotten to know the community, and again, we're still early here. I think, as I mentioned, there are really two big reasons. The first is that, obviously, the building of our facility will be a long-term, not just short-term collaboration with the jurisdiction, with its local businesses, with the talent base. And we have genuinely enjoyed getting to know many of you. We found the collaborative approach to working together to be really encouraging. And we're excited about what it might look like to very practically work together on this project, not just for the next six months, but, you know, for the next decade or more. Second, we feel like Alameda is really mission-aligned. Obviously, the Climate Action Resiliency Plan is really aligned with our goals. We feel like our goals align well with Alameda's economic development goals. You know, we're working to decouple economic progress from the consequences of climate change, and, you know, we're excited about the prospect of doing that together. And then finally, it's all about talent. A lot of our team are really excited about the people they could hire in Alameda, right? We're growing the team very rapidly over the years ahead, and we really value our managers' input about who they want to add to their teams and what it would mean for their ability to do so if we were to be located in different places. A lot of our current team is excited about the prospect of, you know, either already lives in Alameda or is excited about the prospect of moving to Alameda, raising their families here. You know, many of us would do the same. It's also a very personal choice. And then finally, as I mentioned, we're building a new industry. If we're successful, we have a talent base to build that doesn't exist yet. And so it's really important to us to do so in a place where we would want to build the kinds of educational partnerships and invest in the kinds of long-term ways that would ensure a workforce that can deliver on our goals, not just in two years, but also in five and 10 and 20.
Thank you for that. I think my colleagues have asked a lot of the questions, and I do, oh, first I should disclose that last year I did come out to Fremont and got a nice tour of the facility out there, so thank you for that. And I peppered staff with many questions, and Abby Thorne-Liman answered some, and you answered others. I would just ask that those responses be shared with the council and probably with the city clerk as well. And so, just, and I do know, and it was said over and over in your answers and in the FAQs, that safety is your top priority. When former Assembly Member Bill Quirk submitted his letter of support, he did say in his second-to-last paragraph that Pacific Fusion must also demonstrate that any radiation is contained within a limited area of the facility and poses no risk to the surrounding community. You talk in the response about the, the California Public Health Radiological Branch that will oversee the licensing. But we do know that you will, there will eventually be the transport from the facility of the waste disposal. And so this is, you want to talk, somebody just talk about what that is? Those roughly 200 gallons per month, or one 48 by 48-inch pallet? Does somebody want to just talk about that and how it will be transported? And how it will be, the waste will be stored before it's transported out?
Yes, so I, I mentioned earlier that one of the byproducts when you have a fusion reaction and you produce neutrons is those neutrons can activate or make that metal that's close by the fusion reaction closes a few feet away. I could make that metal be activated, or in other words, turn it into material that has to be, that has some low-level amount of radiation at that point. That material then is something that we collect as, as we do experiments on this facility. And it turns out that roughly one pallet worth of this metal material, it's, it's a dust, basically, is collected in approved containers, stored, and then transported with approved rad waste brokers. with approved rad waste brokers. There's a whole cottage industry around the transportation of this kind of thing. So if you think of one pallet's worth, 48-inch by 48-inch worth of approved containers for storing this kind of debris and waste that would then be hauled away by these rad waste brokers.
And stored indoors in secure facilities.
Yes, of course. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. I think that is enough for now. Any other clarifying questions? Thank you both so much. You can have a seat. We're going to take public comment.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do, and they'll each get two minutes, because we have a bunch. So, the first up is Ron Saltz.
Welcome, Speaker Saltz, or Saltz, you'll correct me. Come on up. And when you come up to speak, do speak into the microphone, make it whatever height you need. Welcome.
Mayor Ashcroft, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of Agenda Item 7B. I'm, have lived in Alameda for 25 years, on the street of Versailles, which I know how to pronounce. I'm also a trained nuclear physicist. I do fundamental, basic research in nuclear and particle physics at machines like CERN in Europe and at Brookhaven. I'm also employed by Lawrence Livermore National Lab, which has been mentioned several times. But I, I do not work on fusion. I do not represent the laboratory in any official or unofficial capacity. I'm simply here as a longtime resident of Alameda, who just so happens to have two degrees from MIT. So I have really only three, three statements, yeah, three comments. So, and some of this will be a little bit repetitive, but all forms of energy used by, by us, by man, are essentially derived from fusion reactions that power the sun and stars. All forms of energy have some associated risk with them. The riskiest are energy sources like coal and oil and even natural gas that are releasing carbon into the environment and, and will cause problems already and, and down the road. Of all the forms of energy, nuclear fusion is among the safest and cleanest, as was pointed out. There's no risk of meltdown. There's no, there's no large volumes of radioactive waste that need disposal. And, and so it, I'm just going to close by saying that I think this is a real opportunity for Alameda. I'm looking forward to biking by the Hornet and seeing this facility grow. And I think not only is it good for Alameda, it's an opportunity for Alameda to be a part of something much bigger. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Thomas Schenkel.
Welcome, Speaker Schinfeld. You'll correct us. Hi.
Yes, Mayor, council members.
A little closer to the microphone, if you will.
I'm here to support this motion here of Pacific Fusion. I'm a longtime resident of Bay Area, about 30 years, last 27, San Francisco. I was a postdoc at Livermore. Now I'm, I've been a senior scientist at Berkeley Lab, around the corner. And I just want to share with you my excitement about the times we live in. There is so much learning and knowledge, knowledge gained about these fundamental processes that were once obscure, and now we learn how to control them in the laboratory, like around the corner at the laser facility at NIF. And here we have a company inspired by those decades of, of learning and, and using and leveraging that knowledge base with new technologies, putting together a potential, an approach that, that promises to, to bring us this abundant safe energy of, of nuclear, of fusion in, in the next decade or so. And why, why you asked, why Alameda? Well, Bay Area is an expensive place. What is this, the secret sauce here? Why not go to some green field site in the mid, in the Midwest? And one important aspect you need here is talent. You need to have the people, and you have here this amazing density of universities, national laboratories, unique in the country, to, to make this work by adding this unique value in these new technologies driven by science. And I think Pacific Fusion has an amazing proposal, and it will bring, make Alameda proud.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Ryan Byrd.
Welcome, Speaker Byrd. Ah, speaking of public utility commissioners, welcome. I think we have a quorum.
Yeah, I know. All right, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and City Councilmembers, City Staff. I'm Ryan Byrd, an Alameda resident, a clean energy professional. I also serve on the Public Utilities Board, and I'm, while I'm not officially representing the PUP tonight, I will say we all are very pleased to have our new Commissioner DeVries joining our ranks. But tonight, I just wanted to voice my support for this item and for council moving forward with Pacific Fusion. As we all know, our community and planet are facing the existential climate crisis. In order to avoid catastrophe, we need both incremental efforts to reduce emissions, like what we're doing at AMP and what we're doing at the city. We also need game-changing new technologies like nuclear fusion. I've met with the folks from Pacific Fusion, and I've been very impressed both by their capabilities as, as an organization and the thoughtfulness with which they've approached this effort. I know they've met with a number of other key stakeholders, including myself, community members, AMP, CASA, a bunch of folks, to discuss the project, review some of the safety concerns that you've all kind of explored tonight, and really explore the positive impacts they would bring to the community. So from my perspective, I'm, I'm a big supporter of this effort. On an engineering level, the technology is safe, as you've heard from people much more qualified than myself. I have no concerns about the power needs for the project. I think they've taken some steps to address some of the concerns or, or questions that were originally raised by AMP. And, and, you know, overall, just the potential impacts of the technology are really immeasurable. So, I just want to close and say this type of technology, this type of addition to our business community is one, you know, helps redevelop Alameda Point, brings in new jobs, furthers our sustainable, sustainability values. This is exactly who we should be seeking to work with, and I just encourage you all to move forward with this agreement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Jonathan Delong.
Welcome, Speaker Delong. Hello.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. A longtime Alameda resident. I'm also the Director of the REAP Climate Center. Some of you may also recognize me from the Alameda County Workforce Development Board. I'm also on the Restoration Advisory Board for the Clean Power Base, and I'm engaged in many things: climate, renewable energy, green technology. I was the biodiversity facilitator for the MIT Sustainability Summit this year. I submitted a letter, and I will refer you to that, to look to the safety and the science that I talk about, but I'm here really to show support for Pacific Fusion and the safe, clean energy source. And so much of what I was going to talk about was already covered by people, again, much more qualified than I. So I guess I will just sort of advise council on this. I, I actually ended up here today through a path not normally traveled by me. I, I found myself engaging on Facebook with people who were opposing this, and I realized that a lot of the things they were saying just weren't entirely accurate. And I'm really excited for the phase of this project where we can move into the community outreach, like we do for the Sea of Horizon Adaptation Plan and the Urban Forestry Plan. We do that really well here in Alameda, because there's some confusion between fission and fusion, and they are very, very different processes with different risk factors. So I really invite council to follow the science and look to other facilities like hospitals, who are using these similar types of materials very safely. There's a long record for that. But, you know, not to bring in the doom and gloom of it all, but, you know, we are in a climate crisis, and really, that, a lot of that revolves around renewable energy. And as we do the math, right, this is a puzzle. This is a math problem to solve. As we do the math of what it's going to take to meet our energy needs and also do some drawdown of legacy carbon in the air, it's hard to figure out how to solve for that math without fusion in the mix. And, and that's just a really heavy thing, not to put that on your shoulders here today, but this technology and the promise of it solves a lot of big problems for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Trish Spencer.
Welcome, Speaker Spencer.
I also support council moving forward with this exclusive negotiating agreement with Pacific Fusion. While I was on council, I had the opportunity to visit their facility in Fremont and speak with them. I want to thank them for all of their transparency through this process. That being said, I think that it's important, and for instance, on the FAQs, when they say a small amount, be, it's fine to say a small amount, but I think they also need to be specific in regards to what is the small amount. And they can include links to their website, other documents that then would define what they're speaking to. And yes, I get that they're speaking to laypeople, but as we've heard this evening, there's a lot of people in this room that have expertise, and so I think that would be helpful to do that. Another concern I have, though, is in regards to the transportation specifically, how it gets, any materials get to build the facility, and then also any waste, how they get transported. Because, for instance, in Fremont, they're in an industrial area. I think you actually just get off the freeway and pretty much drive down very wide streets to get there, versus being here in Alameda at the point. We have the soccer field, we have the high school, we have residential properties, pretty close. And so, and if they're coming from what bridge, and then also working with the city in regards to when some of the lanes get closed through the tube, we will then have trap, more traffic out on the bridges, so to coordinate, to have as little impact as possible. As we've heard this evening, we have many people from the east end of town. I think it's real important to include people from the west end of town that will be most impacted by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Todd Hickman.
Welcome, Speaker Hickman.
After six years in the Navy's nuclear power program with fission, I can really appreciate some fusion, much safer. I fully support this company and fusion. I did hear one red flag, though, when I hear somebody say that there's no chance of anything escaping the facility. Red flag, Chernobyl, the Japanese power plant by the sea with the tsunami. Stuff happens, stuff escapes, there are risks associated with all this. So that concerns me, first red flag from this company. What I'm really here to talk about tonight, though, is to warn this company, to reach out to this company. I see you've talked to the city. I've seen they've given you the cherry-red treatment. I can see that you're sitting with the city's favorite consultants, and they've given you, told you everything you wanted to hear, introduced you to everybody they want you to meet, but of course, they've kept you hidden from the people you should really talk to. There's some lines in this item here that you're going to see further about how this action is not subject to further environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. As your project goes on, they're going to continue to tell you that, well, the city of Alameda has not updated their implementing procedures in over 40 years, so they're not even an authorized lead agency. They have failed every company that's come to the point with CEQA by sugarcoating the issue and misleading these companies, and now these companies are paying the price with numerous CEQA lawsuits. So I would urge you, I would caution you to do your research, to speak to the people you should speak to, and to get out there and figure this out. This city knows nothing about CEQA, nothing about how to do a proper CEQA review, and they've only tried to violate CEQA, violate the law, skirt it, get around it, and push it through, and now it's coming back to haunt them. Since they haven't been an approved agency for 40 years, all of their exemptions, all of their reviews are open for attack.
Time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker.
We're going to remote speakers.
I am going to ask for anyone who is not at the speaker's podium to please be silent, and I'm going to ask once.
Hunter Cobb.
Cobb?
Cobb, yes.
Speaker Cobb? Is it remote or in person?
Yes, remote.
Oh, remote. Okay, welcome.
They should be able to speak. They're unmuted.
Speaker Hunter Cobb, can, can you hear us? Can you join?
They're, they're in, and they're unmuted, so.
Okay. Oh, I heard something. Hello, hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, it's a little bit soft. Maybe just speak up a bit.
Okay, I do have a headset, maybe that would work better. Hang on.
Okay. Just pause, can you pause the clock?
Yeah, I, please don't keep the clock running.
Go ahead, so we can hear you well enough.
Can, can you hear me now?
Oh, that's perfect.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, this is Hunter Cobb, a longtime resident of Alameda, and a much longer enthusiast for fusion power. I guess I'm going to have to cut short my presentation, but most of the discussion of fusion in the popular press these days portrays fusion as an up-and-coming technol, technology that will add to our current array of alternative technologies. You know, i.e., something to fight climate change and provide electricity for AI and electric cars. But this completely misses the boat. We are talking about the mind of man harnessing the most energy-dense power source ever. We are talking about virtually unlimited cheap energy for the foreseeable future. This means cheap food and unlimited fresh water, anywhere on the globe, just for starters. I won't elaborate, because my time is running short, but fusion power will open a whole new epoch for human civilization. And we can, we can play a role in that here in Alameda. Imagine how this will impact life in the city. I mean, as some have mentioned, in the not-too-distant future, students at Alameda College, Ensenol, and Alameda High could be participating in apprenticeship programs in frontier areas of fusion and plasma technologies, and this is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Debbie Ryan.
Welcome, Speaker Ryan. She's also remote, because I don't see her.
Yes, they're all remote, yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Hello.
Wonderful. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Mayor Ashcroft. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Debbie Ryan. I'm going to go fast. I'm here tonight as Vice President of CAFA, Community Action for Sustainable Alameda. I'm also co-chair of Alameda Unified's PTA Council on Climate and Sustainability. I'm also renewable energy developer. I've been doing this for 20 years. I'm deeply in support of the city's exclusive negotiating agreement with Pacific Fusion. First of all, this is incredibly exciting. Yes to mission-aligned, yes to the backers behind this work. This is a phenomenal, and as the last speaker said, epic opportunity for the city of Alameda. We wrote a letter to council, I hope you've all read that. We are here to mobilize the community, and we are going to be here for the next six months as we work to do that throughout the community. Our focus is not just on sustainability, but on combining this with robust economic development strategies. I think a lot of the speakers have said a lot of the important pieces here, colleagues such as Nick and Ryan and others. But we very much focus on the growing number of clean and green tech companies here in the city. It positions us in an epicenter of future innovation, technology, investment opportunity as we work towards a much more carbon-free city-state planet. I, I just want to jump and say the simple things here. The promise of fusion is now, it's in the public eye, the investments are massive. Obviously, they've raised a ton of money. They're serious, they're going to be here for the long term. We've heard about the jobs they're going to create for our economy. They're willing to make this massive imprint, investment on innovation infrastructure, which means a new campus, new streets, new utility infrastructure, new sidewalks, new landscaping, much, much more. This is going to attract more clean tech companies, we hope, to this establishment, to, to where they are based. I also want to, and I'm going to hold her to this, but I've met with Courtney Richardson, who's wonderful, twice. She's the Infrastructure Lead for Pacific Fusion. We've already discussed their dedication to really bringing the community along by helping us to.
And your time is up. Thank you so much. Our next speaker.
Toby Thei, TheiDing?
Is it hyphenated Fields?
No, it's T-H-E-I-D-I-N-G.
It should be Tiding.
Tiding, yes.
I'm, I'm German, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Thanks, thanks for letting me speak. I'm a student at UPenn, and I, I'm studying physics, business, and tech. I'm Alameda-born and raised, and I just wanted to note that the disasters mentioned at Chernobyl in Japan, those were fission reactors and didn't have the same safety standards that fusion reactors do. I'm in heavy support of, of Pacific Fusion and their R&amp;D plans for Alameda. I recently compiled a fusion, or a venture capital report on promising fusion companies, and I got to learn about Pacific Fusion in doing so. I'm confident they'll play a significant role in the future of fusion as an industry due to their approach. It's really similar to what's, what was going on at Livermore and NIF. And supporting this venture would undoubtedly be a major step towards advancing clean energy in our own backyard. I spent summer 2023 interning at CASA, and I wrote a report to complement the CARP and, and the, support the process of the misaccero review. A lot of that work was on optimizing reaching that zero in our city by leveraging community engagement, and I am so sure that collaborating with Pacific Fusion would further demonstrate our commitment to green energy and a sustainable future. As an Alameda resident, it'd be wonderful to return home after spending cold winters As an Alameda resident, it'd be wonderful to return home after spending cold winters in Philly, it's too cold right now, to the island and be able to, to establish a career, hopefully a family one day, and work at, work on Fusion at the same time. So yeah, having Pacific Fusion on the island, tremendous opportunity for the community to learn about the prospects of the industry and to take part in, in an energy revolution. That's, that's really what Fusion offers. And as a young individual of, of 19 years, that's so strange. I'm, I'm particularly excited about the prospects for the youth of Alameda, like many other speakers have said. So, thank you guys.
Thank you, and good luck at school. Our next speaker?
Madeline Sadek.
Welcome Speaker Sadek.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers and City Staff. Madeline Sadek, President/CEO of the Alameda Chamber and Economic Alliance. We strongly support Pacific Fusion's negotiations agreement as a vital step towards clean, sustainability, energy, innovation in Alameda. That advancements in Fusion energy aligns with our city's commitment to green technology, economic growth, and global energy solutions. Approving this will provide Alameda as a leader, well, I'm sorry, it will position Alameda as a leader in the future of clean energy. We urge your support in making this vision a reality. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Ben Ward.
Welcome Speaker Ward.
Good evening, Mayor Ashcroft and members of City Council. Good evening. My name is Ben Ward and I'm speaking on behalf of Nutella Energy, a longtime renewable energy company headquartered here at Alameda Point. I'm here tonight to express Nutella's support for Pacific Fusion to become a member of the Alameda Point Business Community. Alameda Point is proudly already home to several technology leaders who share focus of what is critical challenge of our era. The intertwined crises of climate change, climate resiliency, sustainability, and the protection of biodiversity matter deeply to this community. Becoming the new home for Pacific Fusion would be an excellent and exciting next step for the base that aligns well with city objectives. Creating a state-of-the-art new home for Pacific Fusion right here in the Enterprise District also checks so many of the city's goals for that space. The planned next step of an exclusive negotiating agreement is a great way to keep this unique opportunity at hand while the finer details are evaluated by the city. Thank you both to the City Council and staff for your continued hard work in guiding the positive, exciting growth of mutually supportive business and community here on Alameda Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Alan Feldman?
Speaker Feldman? Okay, welcome Alan Feldman.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I, I have been working for several years, 35 years, career in the field of health physics, which is radiation safety. And the company I work for, NV5 Global, has been working with Pacific Fusion to help them on the path to gaining their license with the California Department of Public Health. And I just wanted to share with you briefly my background. I, I have a master's degree in environmental health and a doctorate in radiological sciences. And I've done a lot of work supporting licensees, including many in California and several in the Bay Area, some pretty large companies like Genentech and Gilead Sciences. Point being, we, me, my colleagues, we've worked a lot with California radioactive material licensees, licensed by the California Department of Public Health. And we're bringing that expertise to Keith and his staff, his colleagues at Pacific Fusion, so that the license application that they ultimately submit to the state is going to be complete with a radiological safety program that is going to be comprehensive, that's going to protect the workforce, it's going to protect the environment. And it's also, you know, going to address something that I've heard a couple people raise concern about, and that is the transportation of waste. That is another licensed component. Radioactive materials transportation is regulated by the U.S. Department of Transportation as hazardous materials. And just like everything else about the program, they will have to do it the right way and the regulators will be making sure that, that that's in fact what's going to happen. And when that happens, there is safety in the transportation of these materials. Thanks for the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Stephen Bum?
Bum, B-U-M? Welcome Speaker Bum.
Good evening, Mayor Ashcroft and City Council. I work with Alan at NV5. I'm a senior consultant with him. I'm dual-certified in health physics and industrial hygiene. And I'm, I have almost 50 years of experience in the nuclear industry, both NRC, Department of Energy, licenses, private, public. I've done a lot of work in the Bay Area. One of the organizations I support is Lawrence Berkeley National Lab, so just up the hill from you. I really focus on operational safety. I've spent my entire career protecting the workers, the public, and the environment. And we are working very diligently with Keith and his staff to set up robust radiation safety programs that will minimize the exposure to, to the workers at Pacific Fusion as well as the public and minimize any releases to the environment. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
All right. Thank you, all of our speakers. Okay, we close public comment with that and we go to, to the council comments. So let's start. I'm gonna go start with the Vice Mayor, Councilmember Bowler, Councilmember Desog, back to Councilmember Jensen, and I'll go last. So Vice Mayor?
Yes, hi. I highlighted some things that were said, sorry, I was trying to, yeah. I, I think it was said tonight that a lot of the issues, sorry, I'm in the wrong thing, but the vision of Pacific Fusion aligns with our, like, our economic goals and also our climate goals. And, sorry, I just, so many good things were said already, I, it just feels kind of moot. But, so I just want to echo so many of the really great sentiments. I was gonna go read some of the things that I highlighted. But yeah, it's been a very exciting and robust discussion. And yeah, I feel very optimistic about this. It's a great opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowler?
Thank you. I want to thank the representatives of Pacific Fusion for being here tonight and this hard work. The city staff did a great job looking at this. We're talking about a significant portion of the Enterprise District, which, of course, the intent is to really being a driver for jobs. The fact that we're looking at a company that has the potential to really bring a huge investment into this, not only this community, but this planet, is really significant. So it does align really well, as the Vice Mayor was saying, with our economic goals, our values as a community, the plans that we have in place. I think that the questions that were addressed tonight about the issues of the safety of the technology were important ones, but some of the speakers, you know, emphasized the fact that this is Fusion technology, it's not Fission. It's a technology that really sits in the space of being one of the most safe types of technology to produce energy because it doesn't have the same risks and, not just direct risks, but indirect risks that a lot of our current energy production on the planet does. So the fact that, the timing of this, where you could argue that the, the city had a few years where it was very difficult to find the right partner for some of this space because of some events that were beyond our control. The fact that that happened turned out to be fortuitous because we have a partner that's really pretty uniquely exactly what we would, if we just sat down on drawing board and said, hey, what would be the ideal partner for us? There are, in any, any decision like this, there's going to be some risks, but the rewards are just, you know, really, really impactful for our community and for, for, for really the entire civilization, if you think about it. So we're really excited about this in terms of, I think as a community and the people that I've talked to in the community. It's important to realize that the funding that's gone on with the venture capital and how successful Pacific Fusion, that is significant because it shows that there is an overwhelming demand for sophisticated investors to invest in this type of technology and to really move it forward. So the opportunity to be part of that, I think, is really significant, too. And I am in favor of this proposal and this exclusive agreement where we can work out additional details in the next few months.
Thank you. Councilmember Desog?
Oh, thank you. I, I'm, I'm not yet in favor of this proposal. I think more information is needed regarding handling of radiation or radioactive materials. So what I'm hoping to see down the path through the community engagement process and when it comes back to us, I'm hoping to see answers to questions like, how does the amount of radiation handled or prepared by this facility in its early, middle, or mature stages compare to radiation handled by, say, Alameda Hospital or Kaiser Hospital in downtown Oakland, or typical dentist office in Alameda, or the USS Enterprise when it was homeported in, in Alameda? The USS Enterprise had two nuclear reactors, if you remember. Another thing is what is the position of leading advocates such as Sierra Club's National Office, NRDC National Office, or other leading national environmental organizations on nuclear fusion or on something particular like this? A third question that I'm hoping to, you know, make sure to see answers to, if they can describe regulatory reporting requirements when reportable incidents occur and how quickly do we in Alameda get the information? Other questions would be if they can provide a step-by-step slide deck presentation describing why and how this facility is safe relative to unexpected events such as earthquake, whether it's low, medium, or high, fires, terrorist attacks, or waste transportation accidents. Also, I just, I would love to see discussion, as I discussed earlier, you know, what is the gold standard when it comes to construction industry standards for, for a facility like this? And how, what does the entity have in mind when it considers constructing its facility? How will its facility compare relative to what the, what's the industry gold standard? And also, another question is why the area, which I asked earlier, why the area won't be forever scarred by left-behind radiation precluding future users? I, I think there's no doubt that the Pacific Fusion will probably address a lot of these questions through the community engagement process. But, you know, it would be also nice to see responses in writing. And because, you know, we're in this kind of preliminary stage and while I appreciate the answers that were provided by the Pacific Fusion and why I also appreciate, you know, the contributions of members of, of the city of Alameda, you know, who no doubt are incredibly well credentialed in this area. While I appreciate all that, you know, I would like to see in writing a little more heft when it comes to why this is a safe facility and how it will be handling radiation or, and as one of the speakers said, I think the person from, who went to degrees from MIT, there's always risk associated with this. So I just want to better understand, you know, what are the risks involved here before we move forward? I think there's a lot to be really intrigued by this and intrigued with a capital I. But for me, and no doubt for all the other council members, you know, we definitely need to understand better the safety dimensions of, of what we're being asked to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. Thank you, staff, and to Pacific Fusion for their presentation. I also had an opportunity to visit the site and it's very exciting to see all the things that are going on there. I think the recommendation to move forward, to negotiate with Pacific Fusion is, is really, really exciting for me. While there are many reasons for optimism with the project, Pacific Fusion's work to model an innovative, replicable, clean energy source could potentially be a game changer, a game changer for Alameda and, and even for our planet. So while the ideal of Fusion may be a global game changer, my focus is always on Alameda. And I appreciate my colleagues' comments as well. Councilmember Desog pointed out that there may be risks related to the projects, to the radioactivity or other storage issues, and to wanting to ensure outreach to the community. I support that and agree with that. And I, I have confidence in staff that those questions will be addressed and answered. And I'll, I'll reiterate Councilmember Desog's questions and, and ask for that information as well. I also would say that as Vice Mayor Pryor pointed out, the proposal and the ideas that will be considered are really in line with our strategic priorities here in Alameda, with our strategic plan that we've adopted and agreed to. By negotiating with and possibly eventually welcoming Pacific Fusion to Alameda, our priorities will be, I'm just gonna talk about three of them. Investing in infrastructure and the economy. As we heard from Pacific Fusion leadership and from staff, this campus, if completed, will result in advances to the deteriorating Alameda Point infrastructure as well as providing more than 150 jobs, serving as an educational hub for K-12 and as a partnership for, for college programs here in Alameda, among other things. Another one of our priorities is to practice fiscally responsible governance. By using the vacant site to create new jobs and educational partnerships and ensuring that the site and nearby lands are provided with infrastructure improvements, tremendous fiscally responsible action if this comes to completion. And finally, one of our, our strategic priorities, we have five of them, and the one that, one of the ones, I, I care about all of them, but closest to my heart perhaps, is building resilience to climate change. Alameda could be the site of a revolutionary, new, clean energy source. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank especially the speakers from Pacific Fusion and for hosting me when you did last night. And there are public comments. We had so many great public comments. And I never cease to be awed by the very bright people who live and work in this city. And so I also had the opportunity to consult with an MIT-trained engineer who worked in the Fusion Lab at MIT. They're all over Alameda, these MIT grads, I'll tell you. But it was really helpful to me to just ask some questions and ask them over again. So these are, and let me just say from the outset, I'm, I'm in. I, I would love to have you choose Alameda and I know that our staff will work carefully to negotiate that ENA. What I would want to see, and it in the city manager and I've had a little bit of chance to chat about this, but communications is really important, are really important. Not only with the community, community engagement is so important. And you've got a great communication style and a way of informing without talking down, but just really helping us understand this complex and fascinating form of energy. But communications are also important if slash when something goes wrong. And so, and this is what I've found, got from the person who has worked in this field. So there does need to be some sort of radiation detectors and monitoring, and I'm sure that is part of your state-of-the-art facility. But there also needs to be communications with the city in real time, with the city, with our public safety. I think that is probably fire that has hazmat teams. So we, the city staff, leadership, need to know in real time when something has happened, not, you know, a report after the fact. As far as risk, there is nothing that is without risk. And so we face a risk from, right now, from climate change, from sea level rise, from groundwater rise if we don't change our ways, both the greenhouse gas emissions we generate from our travel, from our lifestyles, but also the energy sources we use. And so we need to know that we are being able to support these clean, green energy sources. So as far as a gold standard for construction, of course, I expect that, too. And I think we don't have far to look to see examples because as was noted, Berkeley, Livermore, Albuquerque, other areas have done this. And while we can't manage the risk, we can certainly, we can't eliminate the risk, we can certainly see that it is managed carefully. I also do want staff to focus on a transportation plan. And that is not just how to transport the waste materials off-site, but it's also how to transport building materials. how to transport building materials on and off the island. Will it always be by trucks? Would you consider, say, using a barge and coming on water? And then I love that you're going to employ 250 people. If you come here, are they all going to bike to work? Perhaps not. So we need to look at transportation plans around that. And beyond that, I think this is an excellent opportunity for Alameda. I have to say, you sold me with your answer to my question, why Alameda. I am, I think, number one cheerleader for the city, but I have lots of company in that field. So I am certainly in supportive, moving forward with this exclusive negotiating agreement. And that is all I need to say on this subject before asking for a motion to approve this resolution, adopt the resolution approving a 24-month exclusive negotiating agreement with Pacific Fusion, with options to extend for a total of 33 months for potential development of a 12-to-18 acre property, et cetera, et cetera. And I will just throw in briefly, Brad Base for Economic Development Director, Abby Thorne Lyman, help me understand, I know that you're talking to another city. We may have an exclusive negotiating agreement, you don't, but you hope to make a decision by the middle of 2025. I'd give you a little extra time because negotiations can take time, but I don't want to be tied up in land banking either. But Ms. Thorne Lyman explained that the first threshold to continuing to the next step would be to finalize the deal, so we will look for that. So with that said, I am perfectly supportive of this proposal. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I so moved.
Vice Mayor has moved adoption. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Councilwoman Jensen has seconded. Any further discussion, council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No for now.
All right. So we have, we'll count that as a no. The motion passes with four affirmative votes and one in opposition. Thank you so much to everybody, to staff. Okay, we've been going more than two hours, notwithstanding a little kerfuffle break. We're going to take 10 minutes. Could everybody please be back? Ready to go at 9:45? We'll see you then. Thank you.
Under Revenue, Taxation, and Employee Relations, we're supporting funding for rent control enforcement and an office for victim advocacy. And this is one item where we, after the fact, would need to divide it into two items, and thank you to the mayor for that comment. So we will have funding for rent control enforcement be under housing, and then an office for victim advocacy under public safety. And then under Environmental Protection, Sustainability, Recreation, Parks, and Open Spaces, it's a lot of things mashed together in one. But we have to electrify parks and the aquatic center as a highlight, increasing artificial turf fields and pickleball access, and restoring the California Library Services Act. We also have housing and increasing renter-tenant protections and restoring the multifamily housing program. Our next steps is that we'll continue to review, introduce bills, which there are many. The date for introduction is February 21st, so just a few days away. And we'll see how those mesh with the city's legislative agenda and the council's stated priorities. And just for example, Councilmember Jensen had asked recently about SB 45, which I just looked into, and it was on the list of proposals and bills that we will be supporting as a city. SB 45 is really interesting. It requires tethered caps on all recycled bottles. So a lot of the water bottles have those tethered caps, but soda bottles and things like that don't. And looking into it for more than the last 10 years, when they do the beach cleanups, it is often one of the largest source of litter found in our beach cleanups, and so it'll be a great thing for Alameda specifically to come out and support of. So thank you, and I look forward to hearing your discussion and answering any questions.
Any clarifying questions, council? Okay. We, yes, sorry.
Regarding the infrastructure and transportation, the points, the priorities, to support efforts and funding to mitigate local impacts from state construction projects, but there are other construction projects besides state projects, including Port of Oakland projects, or even neighboring city projects. So I would just want to support efforts and funding to mitigate Regarding the infrastructure and transportation, the points, the priorities, to support efforts and funding to mitigate local impacts from state construction projects, but there are other construction projects besides state projects, including Port of Oakland projects or even neighboring city projects. So I would just want to support efforts and funding to mitigate local impacts from large construction projects or, yeah.
That's a great point, absolutely. We are specifically thinking of the Oakland-Alameda Access Project with that one, but absolutely, that's a wonderful point. Thank you, Councilmember.
I do have a question. So, and we emailed about this, but in the executive summary, it is stated that this agenda reinforces the city's commitment to the values of dignity, inclusivity, and respect for all individuals, et cetera, et cetera. I think especially in these challenging political times, that is certainly on the top of many of our minds, but is not the legislative agenda also supporting the city council's stated priorities, which I do realize are included farther into the, I think on page four of this, but wouldn't the overarching theme be that we want to support legislation that supports and reinforces our legislative priorities?
Yes, absolutely. I did include, and I apologize if it wasn't clear, in the first paragraph of the executive summary, it talks about that we're ensuring that the city, by having a legislative agenda, we're ensuring that the city is engaged in legislative matters that reflect the adopted city council's strategic priorities. But to make that more clear, and I can adjust this, but to make that more clear, to say that it's, we're reinforcing those priorities.
Or maybe to just even have listed them the way they listed all the commitments to the values below. That sounds great. Okay, let's see. Any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment, Council? Not seeing any. Okay, thank you, Ms. Henry, and let's go to public comment.
We have two speakers, so they get three minutes each. The first is Gabriel Duncan.
Welcome, Speaker Duncan.
Hello there, Councilmembers. My name is Gabriel Duncan, the founder of the Alameda Native History Project. So I really appreciate the fact that diversity, equity, and belonging is included in the goals that we have legislatively, and I also really appreciate the fact that sanctuary city is also included in these legislative goals or objectives. And once again, I just kind of wanted to bring up the environmental aspects of this, specifically when it comes to dredging. I'm so happy I handed this out because I get to use it again. One of the, one of the top concerns that I had when I reviewed this as it pertains to dredging is that the sediment of the San Leandro Bay is toxic. It has mercury and polycyclic, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, and these are things that build up into the soil. The mercury itself is available to become methylmercury, which is a very toxic, very toxic substance that bio-magnifies through each individual organism that eats it. So the small organism eats it, another animal eats that one, then like a fish eats that, and then we eat the fish, and we're actually getting the highest dose of that toxic substance. So I just wanted to note that when we're dredging these channels, that we need to be careful about where we're storing the dredge material. I know that we have a large dumping site next to the Bay Farm Bridge, and it just kind of concerned me that once this dries out, it then has the potential to become dust, and that becomes toxic dust, which can affect the immediate surrounding areas. So this is something that we need to think about. And the second thing is that there's a toxic marsh crust that's underneath the area that used to be the marsh. We don't know if that's still there. I'm not sure if we know if that's still there because we haven't tested for this in a long time. So I just want to say once again, it's probably a really great idea for us to start, for us to start testing.
Just pause the clock. I don't want him to be interrupted.
It's okay.
So sorry.
If I had Siri on right now, it'd probably interrupt me anyway. So it's very important overall, with all of our very wonderful, well-intentioned goals that we have, that we need to know where we're starting on. So we need to get our baseline information, and we need to consistently gather this data so that way we can make sure that we're reaching the outcomes and goals that we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Todd Hickman.
Welcome, Speaker Hickman.
Well, it sounds great on paper, but you know, as we all know, talk is cheap. 2025-26 general principles, city of Alameda reinforces city's commitment to values of dignity, inclusivity, and respect for all individuals regardless of ethnic or national origin, race, sex, immigration status, and all that. But of course, we've seen it here. We've seen the racism, the bias. We've seen it against Ms. Viagraana. It even appears that Mr. Shen and Mr. Baller have engineered this criminal complaint against her with the county of Alameda. They've even gone to those links to harass this Latina. As we look at public records requests, we can see that numerous Latina city employees have filed racial complaints against the city of Alameda for racial bias, racial disrespect by the city of Alameda. So we see this is a rampant problem in Alameda. We heard it from numerous individuals at last meeting. So what's going on doesn't match these words. Here's more. The city will strongly consider supporting local government action and legislation that safeguards against hate-based violence and discrimination against marginalized communities, promotes social equity, enhances the quality of life and health of all residents and businesses. Well, here we see it. We got Astra Space nine months behind in their rent, all white males, and they got the sweetest deal on the planet. Here we see a female Latina. I know that's redundant, but for, you know, the sake of argument, a female Latina dual citizenship, immigrated to the United States, not even a speeding ticket, not behind on her rent at all, 100% caught up on her rent, and yet she is being harassed, retaliated against, racially profiled, disrespected in every way, shape, and form. So all the nonsense that the city is putting in print here does not match what the city is doing. Did I mention this engineered criminal complaint that Mr. Shen and Mr. Baller appear to have going with the county of Alameda? I mean, that doesn't match these general principles, and it appears that this made-up complaint, this criminal complaint against Viagraana, Ms. Viagraana, is due to even Shen's fraudulent complaint, fraudulent inspection warrant, him lying to a judge, something that could disbar him. So again, talk is cheap, and the city states all these principles, and yet they just don't play out to what's going on in the city of Alameda. Rampant bias and discrimination against Latinas, and the city council just sits up here and smirks. They just smirk. Where's your smirk, Mr. Shen? You're always wearing it. Where is it tonight?
And your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment on the city's legislative agenda. Any council comments, questions? Councilmember Jensen, start with you.
I have a few comments. I appreciate the updated plan. I appreciate the focus areas, and especially tying it into the strategic plan. That's very important. I wanted to ask, well, in the area of infrastructure and transportation, I, I see a lot of goals that I support, especially around making Alameda safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. I, that seems like a pretty broad priority, and I'm sure that we all agree that we want to do that. I'd really like to know when there's any legislation or when we can work to produce some legislation to do that locally, especially locally, but statewide as well. So those are, it's a great goal, but when we want to adopt things to make people safer, that's important. And so going down in that same category, we have, we have a priority to support legislation to increase enforcement of speed and other traffic violations, including to allow the use of automated enforcement cameras for speed and red light violations. That is, there are provisions for red light violation cameras, and I know that eventually, I don't know if the city, perhaps, Ms. Henry, you can tell me, or the city manager, if the city did support the pilot project that's going on in certain cities for speed cameras.
Yes, Councilmember Jensen, we did support that, and we advocated for Alameda to be included as one of those cities, but they chose larger cities, unfortunately, but we did advocate and support of that legislation.
Great. And so especially in the next one as well, speed setting in school zones, yeah, everyone knows my position on speeds and people driving too fast. I also wanted to add, well, not add, but as we've heard and as we see in here, our general principles and our strategic plan values dignity and inclusivity, and I don't see anything in here specific to our native cultures, supporting any legislation or any bills that would expand protections or recognition of native cultures. So that would be something that I think is very important for Alameda. And also, I may have missed it, but I know that early childhood programs, is there anything specific about early childhood programs or about our support for that? It's in our strategic plan, but it's not in here. And so I think that's, we've heard, we've discussed it and had issues locally, so that would be something that I would want to support as well. Thanks.
Let's just go down the line. Vice Mayor Per.
I just want to say that I agree with what Councilmember Jensen just said about recognition of native cultures. I just thought that was great, and I'm glad you said that. So I just wanted to state that also. The, I also want to say that I like that in this for the, I swear I was just looking at this, but where it says maintain support and when necessary, you know, we were saying that to defend sanctuary city status. And I just want to say thank you, especially during this climate. And then also, here it is, support diversity, equity, inclusion also for efforts for city staff. I think it's great to make that specific bold statement, which wasn't a bold statement, you know, two months ago. And so I think it's important for all of our residents to feel safe, and that, that is a priority, you know, is just a start, and I'm glad that we have it in there.
And thank you for raising that, and we all want our residents to feel safe. And maybe later in the meeting, I've been having conversations with our city manager and city attorney about some communications templates that we can use. I am starting to get communications. Ms. Henry, it reminds me of during COVID when seniors were reaching out to me saying, "Mayor, how do I get a vaccine? It's so complicated." And I'm hearing from seniors worried about their social security and Medicare and things like that. It's not quite the legislative agenda, so, but I will later in the evening maybe ask you to expand on what we talked about. Why don't we start from the far end and work in? So I'll start with you, Councilmember Dayceug, and your comments.
Yeah, I just, you know, want to say that there's a lot of things that are great in the legislative agenda, and so I'm very supportive of them. We don't have to agree on everything, but, but you know, we see things in there that we especially like, such as continuing our, looking out for the possibility of a BART extension to Alameda at some point in time, so that's still in there, I'm glad to see. And there's, you know, a lot of other things that I certainly appreciate, so thank you.
Councilmember Bowler.
I just agree with my colleague's feedback. I think there's some good suggestions there. Thank you.
And thank you for all the work that went into this. I, I, the city manager and I had the opportunity today to have lunch with our new Congresswoman, Latifah Simon, at Firebrand Bakery out here at Alameda Point, and one of the things she was asking us is to let her know what, what legislation, what issues we would like her to carry forward. She's even, and I was really pleased to hear this, she's even working with Republicans that, because we know there are like-minded folks on both sides of the aisle in Congress, and that is what it's going to take, especially now. The items that we mentioned, and I think it's encompassed here, is certainly the need to backfill any federal funding that might be, not be forthcoming for projects that are already in plan, underway, and, you know, where would that funding come from? I think you talk about the, the, do you talk about the VA and what's going on? Yeah, yeah. And the one thing on transportation, infrastructure, it's very important, and I do think that the bicycle pedestrian bridge between Alameda and Oakland across the estuary has become even more important when we start to realize that when the Oakland-Alameda Access Project is going on, the one means of ingress and egress by land, well, underwater, but by land, from the west end of Alameda is going to be compromised for a time, so we really do need that second, that second crossing point. I certainly want to see the Oakland-Alameda Water Shuttle be made permanent. I think we're going to see an increase in its frequency during the OAAP work. However, I would like to add that it needs to be made an electric vehicle, an electric shuttle, because it's great to get people across the island, but we can't be, you know, spewing fumes into the air emissions at the same time. And then I sent you, oh, I think that I added, you got this, I know, on page six, the talk about, this is under public safety, and so the, one, two, three, four, fifth, bullet point says, "Support disaster prevention, planning, and implementation efforts as well as developing building codes that support the functional recovery following an earthquake." And I just said, because you just never know what's around the corner, that I would broaden the language to include fire, flooding, and other natural disasters, just kind of, you know, a laundry list and for things that we might, still might not have even anticipated. And then, I know I sent you the, this is legislative agenda time, so I sent you what the Alameda County Transportation Commission recently approved for their annual, the 2025 legislative agenda, and broken down by state and federal legislation and priorities and all that. And that is a really nice, manageable format. We get monthly updates. I don't expect monthly, but to the extent that you're tracking bills and that we're taking positions, I think it's just nice to, you know, it could even be an off-agenda report, or maybe just a consent calendar. Come on up and enlighten us.
I should have had this on a slide, and I apologize that I didn't, but I, on the city's website, I have a webpage called, it's alameda.ca.gov/legislativeaffairs. And as we're supporting legislation throughout the legislative cycle, I add the piece of legislation that we're supporting, who the author is, and then the reason, brief reason that we're giving from the legislative agenda for why we're supporting that legislation. So if you, if you go onto that website, if folks are interested, you'll see all of the current proposals, current bills that we're supporting, and then we have some chapter, we have accordions down at the bottom for chapters, so you can look back to 2023, 2022, and see the different legislation that we've supported. And actually, it also, it also includes, for the chaptered legislation, it includes which ones went into law and which ones didn't. So looking back at last year, for example, we supported about 50 bills, but I think only about half of them were signed into law.
That was the state legislative track record, too. No, and so that's great to know. And then maybe on a quarterly basis, we could bring like a consent calendar item, just to report summarizing that, maybe not in such huge detail, but I like to follow those things. So what we are looking for, is this just to accept the report?
Could I add something?
Please, yes, yes, yes.
Mayor, you brought something up that I had missed, and I wanted to also include to your point. I appreciate that you were able to meet with our Congresswoman, and I did also have a meeting with some of our leaders of our life sciences, and there is a lot of concern here in Alameda about the NIH cuts to administrative overhead, and I'm sure, well, I hope that maybe this was discussed, but this is, cutting the administrative overhead part of federal contracts for life sciences would, would decimate a lot of innovative experimental
as developing building codes that support the functional recovery following an earthquake." And I just said, because you just never know what's around the corner, that I would broaden the language to include fire, flooding, and other natural disasters, just kind of, you know, a laundry list and for things that we might, still might not have even anticipated. And then, I know I sent you the, this is legislative agenda time, so I sent you what the Alameda County Transportation Commission recently approved for their annual, the 2025 Legislative Agenda, and broken down by state and federal legislation and priorities and all that. And that is a really nice, manageable format. We get monthly updates, I don't expect monthly, but to the extent that you're tracking bills and that we're taking positions, I think it's just nice to, you know, it could even be an off-agenda report, or maybe just a consent calendar, come on up and enlighten us.
I should have had this on a slide, and I apologize that I didn't, but I, on the city's website, I have a webpage called, it's alametac.gov/legislativeaffairs. And as we're supporting legislation throughout the legislative cycle, I add the piece of legislation that we're supporting, who the author is, and then the reason, brief reason that we're giving from the legislative agenda for why we're supporting that legislation. So if you go onto that website, if folks are interested, you'll see all of the current proposals, or current bills that we're supporting, and then we have some chapter, we have accordions down at the bottom for chapters, so you can look back to 2023, 2022, and see the different legislation that we've supported. And actually, it also includes, for the chaptered legislation, it includes which ones went into law and which ones didn't. So looking back at last year, for example, we supported about 50 bills, but I think only about half of them were signed into law.
That was the state legislative tracker I could do. No, and so that's great to know. And then maybe on a quarterly basis, we could bring like a consent calendar item, just to report summarizing that, maybe not in such huge detail, but I like to follow those things. So what we are looking for, is this just to accept the report?
Could I add something?
Please, yes, yes, yes.
Mayor, you brought something up that I had missed, and I wanted to also include it to your point. I appreciate that you were able to meet with our Congresswoman, and I did also have a meeting with some of our leaders of our life sciences, and there is a lot of concern here in Alameda about the NIH cuts to administrative overhead, and I'm sure, well, I hope that maybe this was discussed, but this is, cutting the administrative overhead part of federal contracts for life sciences would decimate a lot of innovative, experimental things that are going on here in Alameda. And a lot, even a lot of our long-term, our long-term life science companies would be severely hurt, so that's something that I want to ensure that we can be aware of and responsive to.
And to your point, and I mean, she's spoken about this publicly, so I think it's okay that I say this, I mean, our Congresswoman, first of all, she loves Alameda. She was just so fascinated with what was going on. We didn't have enough time to take her around, but we are definitely getting her back for a tour. You know, she worked with Abby Thorne Lyman when they were both at BART. She was on the BART board, and Ms. Thorne Lyman was in charge of the real estate portfolio. But the Congresswoman gets it about the NIH funding. She, you may know, is legally blind because of a genetic disorder, and she's a widow because her husband at a young age died of a rare form of cancer. So, I mean, I don't think there's anyone who's not impacted by health issues and has not had someone benefit from the life-saving, life-changing science experiments. So I am hoping that at some point in the not-too-distant future, reality or common sense or something will return. But in the meantime, it did stand, didn't it, city manager, that she was working across the aisle with folks on some just common sense legislation? So let's keep the face, yeah. Okay, anything further? And then remind me, we're just accepting this report, is that correct?
Approving the legislative agenda.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, that's what you need to do, is just approve.
Do it as a motion, okay. We have a motion. It's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Bowler. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Henry, for that. All right, moving on, let's go to item 7D.
Recommendation to receive an informational presentation on Alameda Police Department data from the police auditor and provide feedback regarding the police auditor's ongoing work.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Before you start, do we want to?
Oh, you know what? And this is also one where I heard that you would like a little more time, so give me just a minute for this, housekeeping. Okay, and let me just establish this. Is 15 minutes really enough, or would you like?
I think, yes.
Yes?
Yes, I will speak fast.
You don't have to speak fast, okay. All right, so what I'm looking for then, Council, is a motion to add five minutes to the staff report, staff presentation for item 7D.
Summon.
It's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Prior. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course not, and you have 15 minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Lee Grossman, and I am the police auditor for the city. I've been in this role for a little over a year and a half now. Since this role was created and I was hired, one of my primary objectives has been to enhance transparency and provide the community with a better understanding of the types of actions officers are taking in the city. To support this effort, I publish a monthly report summarizing key areas of risk within the department. As necessary, I do further analysis of the data to identify trends or areas that may warrant further review. This evening, I'm here to present a high-level overview of data from 2023 and 2024. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have. As we review key trends from 2023 and 2024, I'd like to highlight a few important findings. First, while there has been an increase in internal affairs investigations and use of force reports, there's no indication of increased misconduct. Instead, this rise appears to reflect a proactive effort to enhance accountability and reporting by the department. Regarding traffic stops, the data shows that outcomes remain consistent across all racial groups, with citations and warnings fairly evenly distributed. Additionally, the number of vehicle pursuits did increase sharply in 2024. However, this was due to a policy change that occurred. Lastly, staffing levels have remained steady over the past two years. The number of internal affairs investigations has increased by approximately 50% from 2023 to 2024. I do review each case and discuss it with the chief and the internal affairs lieutenant. I do believe this rise is partially due to supervisors taking a more proactive approach in reporting potential complaints to internal affairs. Over the past year, the department has investigated serious allegations of misconduct, including claims of officers using excessive force and making race-based decisions. However, none of these allegations were substantiated after the investigation. So far in 2024, all but two cases have closed. Of the 32 completed investigations, 12 contained at least one substantiated allegation, and this may or may not be the initial allegation that was made by the community member. Sometimes the investigators find something else during their investigation. These substantiated allegations primarily involved issues such as officer responsibilities, unsafe weapon handling, conduct towards others, unauthorized removal of property, many of which reflect general workplace concerns rather than misconduct in the field. Disciplinary actions for these sustained allegations have raised, varied, ranging from counseling and additional training to separation from city employment. So to give you a quick definition of use of force from the department, use of force is defined as the application of physical techniques or tactics, chemical agents or weapons, on an individual for the purpose of self-defense against an assault, overcoming resistance to arrest or custody, or preventing escape from custody. In 2024, the department saw a 15% decrease in weapon displays. That is when a firearm or teaser is pointed directly at a person. However, incidents involving low-level uses of force saw a 68% increase. Intermediate-level uses of force rose from three incidents to seven incidents in 2024. The most common type of force used by the Alameda Police Department is a control hold. Control holds are department-approved techniques used to manage an individual's movements by applying manual pressure to specific areas of the body. Notably, a control hold can be applied without causing any pain. This does include very low-level uses of force, such as when an individual refuses to put their feet inside a patrol vehicle. If the officer is required to lift those feet into the vehicle, that is considered a use of force. It is reviewed by a supervisor for compliance. And I do want to note that when looking to, you know, compare numbers from Alameda to other agencies, that not all agencies count force the same way. Something that may be classified as a low-level use of force in Alameda may not be considered a force at all in another agency. So the department's threshold is low, meaning that they consider more things forced, and they do review all of these incidents. In 2024, 39% of all use-of-force incidents only involved one of these low-level control holds. For each use-of-force incident, in 2023 and 2024, I conducted a thorough review of the reports and systematically coded key variables. One area of focus was the primary reason officers were on the scene, so what were they doing there in the first place? For incidents involving a weapon display, more than half originated from kind of an on-view, officers seeing something while they're on patrol. The most common example was officers searching for a stolen vehicle following a license plate reader hit. In contrast, nearly two-thirds of lower intermediate-level uses of force were initiated because a dispatch call for service was made. So that's when a 911 call comes in, or a call to the non-emergency line. 41% of these incidents stemmed from disputes or disturbances, such as reports of fights, trespassing, or restraining order violations. One notable trend that I saw in 2024, but not in 2023, was the involvement in certain individuals, certain subjects, in multiple use-of-force incidents throughout the year. In a few cases, individuals were involved in three or more such incidents over the course of the year. One individual in particular was involved in eight incidents with police officers where force was used in 2024. The vast majority of these incidents were initiated by a 911 call for service that came in. These dispatch calls for service were related to issues of trespassing, restraining order violations, and other disorder-related offenses. In each incident, the individual resisted arrest, leading to the use of force by officers. Traffic stops declined 17% in 2024. Other stop types increased in 2024, however, did not offset the overall decrease in traffic stops. The department has prioritized traffic stops in 2025. In January of this year, they conducted 650 traffic stops, which is nearly double the monthly average of 327 in 2024. So hopefully that trend continues. An analysis of traffic stop outcomes shows that very few traffic stops result in an arrest. When they do result in an arrest, the charges typically are warrants, DUI, or drug-related offenses. Approximately half of all traffic stops resulted in a citation, the other half resulted in a warning, and this is fairly consistent across race. The department received approximately 59,000 calls for service in 2024. This is not including calls to the fire department. This is an increase compared to 2022. In 2024, both misdemeanor and felony arrests increased compared to 2022 and 2023. Felony arrests increased 5%, while misdemeanor arrests increased 23%. Though in August of 2024, the police department amended their pursuit policy to allow officers to pursue suspects or vehicles wanted for felony crimes rather than for violent felonies or gun offenses. Prior to this policy change, there was one pursuit, kind of in the first half of the year. Since that policy changed in 2024, there were an additional 12 pursuits. Most pursuits were brief, lasting between one or two minutes. The longest was six minutes long. There was one collision that resulted from a pursuit, and that was when a suspect vehicle tries to squeeze past a patrol vehicle unsuccessfully. Nearly all pursuits were terminated by a supervisor or an officer. Every pursuit undergoes a review by at least a sergeant, a lieutenant, and a captain. The department does recognize the risks associated with pursuits and does identify areas of concern or needs for extra training in each pursuit. Key areas of focus include officer-driving techniques, communication while the pursuit is ongoing, and determining the appropriate time to terminate a pursuit. Collisions decreased in 2024. Officers were found at fault in 71% of the collisions. Four of the seven involved a member of APD hitting a fixed object. There was one officer who was involved in two collisions. They were at fault in one and not at fault in the other. Since 2022, individuals who reach out to the police department, either through 911 or the non-emergency line, receive a follow-up text with the invitation to complete a survey. About 22% of those individuals who receive the invitation complete the survey, which is actually a pretty high response rate for a survey. Satisfaction levels with dispatchers, officers, the department, and safety in Alameda has been relatively steady since 2022. However, there has been a slight increase in satisfaction levels, which is a positive. When a respondent expresses dissatisfaction with the service they received, they are personally called by a lieutenant to address their concerns. Staffing levels have remained relatively steady over the past two years. While the department has successfully hired a number of officers, a similar number have retired or left. Professional staff levels are typically at or nearly fully staffed. However, sworn staffing remains about 22% below authorized staffing. On a positive note, patrol is currently fully staffed. In 2024, there was a slight decline in the number of claims filed against the department, though there was one additional lawsuit filed in 2024 compared to 2023. Claims are filed when an individual believes the city may be responsible for damage or a loss to their property or person. Over 40% of the claims in 2024 were related to vehicle toes, and that is consistent with 2023 numbers. The city paid out three claims in 2024 totaling about $10,000. One claim was for a vehicle release following a vehicle theft, and the other two were for accidents with Alameda Police Department vehicles. And I do want to note, a third-party administrator handles these claims on behalf of the city. And finally, training. The state mandates that officers in California complete 24 hours of continued professional training and 18 hours of perishable skills training every two years. On average, APD officers receive over 100 hours of training annually. Some of the training topics covered include firearms qualifications, gun violence restraining orders, investigative procedures, crisis intervention, and DUI detection. Thank you.
Good time management. Very good. Clarifying questions, Council? I've got one, and I think this may be more for the chief. I'm concerned about the pursuit policy, because we certainly hear about pursuits ending badly in neighboring cities. I think there was one in San Francisco recently that maybe somebody ended up going through a storefront or something. What are the criteria for pursuits?
Sure, so we have a very expansive policy. There are 17 risk factors that supervisors and the watch commander are paying attention to during a pursuit. An officer cannot initiate a, well, they can, I'm sorry, they can initiate a pursuit if there's a felony want. However, they cannot continue the pursuit unless a supervisor comes on the air and acknowledges the pursuit and authorizes the pursuit to go on. Now, when an officer is involved in a pursuit, they are expected to give regular updates. And when I say regular, it's every couple of seconds. The things that they're notifying the supervisor and the watch commander are the speed that they're traveling, the speed that the vehicle that they're pursuing is traveling, how many occupants are in the vehicle, whether or not the occupants appear to be juveniles, their ability to communicate on the radio, traffic conditions, whether it's light, moderate, or heavy, time of day, surface streets, what the surface streets are like, if it's raining or not, if it's dark or not, and then just overall performance of the officer. Most often, these pursuits, as Dr. Grossman spoke to, are, they're terminated by the officer and sometimes terminated by the supervisor. And then after a pursuit occurs, there's a thorough review of what happens. And what I mean by that is, it's reviewed, the review starts by the sergeant, goes up to the lieutenant, and up to the captain. And what they're reviewing is a video. How was the officer performing? Was the information that they're putting out accurate? Was, were there risk factors that they took on that they shouldn't have taken on? After that report is submitted, then we do a separate, independent board. The board then consists of commanders and the captain, and they do a separate review. And then they come to an assessment on whether there are any training points for the officer, whether there's a need to do policy updates, what was done well, what was not done well, and if there is any, there haven't been any so far. I think there was one where it was actually referred to internal affairs, but the rest, none were found to have, where the officers engaged in misconduct. So it's a very thorough review. We understand that there is a certain amount of risk. Our policy is still strict. We don't, there are many cities, many agencies, that allow their police departments to pursue for anyone that flees from them. We have a high threshold. It's got to be a felony crime. You always ask the question, is the juice worth the squeeze? There's a certain amount of risk that comes with this business, but we want to try to mitigate the risk as much as possible, and that requires regular updates by the officer or officers that are involved in the pursuit.
So Chief Joshee, this officer who's driving this high-speed pursuit, they are also communicating with their supervisor at the same time? with their supervisor at the same time?
Yes. So what they do is they use their radio. They train in the academy how to hold the handheld. You're probably familiar with that.
I didn't train that.
Okay, okay. So there's a technique that you use. So as you're driving, it doesn't interfere with your ability to drive. And so you're squeezing, you're pressing the button as you're speaking, and you're putting out, "I'm going northbound, park, street, speeds are 36 miles an hour, driver's in control of their vehicle, light traffic, driver's in the number-one lane." Once a driver starts doing things that are too high-risk, the supervisor is expected to cancel the pursuit.
Okay. And I don't want to ask for specifics because I don't want to tip off anybody who might use these tips, but there would be specific criteria for when you simply, when a pursuit simply wouldn't be authorized, a high-speed pursuit?
Absolutely. Again, first and foremost, what's the want? Is the want a felony crime or not? Our officers are well-trained. They know, "You better not chase a car. That's not wanted for a felony." But then it's a totality of circumstances, the information that's coming out. And they're not only speaking to the supervisor. When they're keying up the radio, everyone who has a radio on at the police department is hearing the traffic that's coming out.
They're aware that this is happening.
And the other thing is the technology that you all authorize us to purchase in our vehicles is in-car cameras. As soon as they turn on their lights, the camera starts recording. So that helps us with our review, and it backs up 30 seconds so you can assess what was actually occurring before the stop was initiated.
All right. Okay. Thank you. That's all for me. As a clarifying questions, counsel?
Vice Mayor Prior? Yes, I have a few. Well, this is more of a comment, but I'm just going to go through what I did. What was here on the slideshow says, "There has been an effort to increase reporting in both areas." Is this an internal effort to increase reporting, or external, or both?
No, this was definitely internal. This was a policy update that we made back in, shortly after June of 2021. The intent was to, so I'll talk about force first. Every police officer that I interview, I talk to them about the equipment that they're issued, and I'm very clear about that the equipment is issued to them. What I mean by that is I'm trying to underscore that there's a social contract that we were involved in with the community. The community trusts us to have all this equipment and says, "Hey, use this equipment to defend us, to defend yourselves, and to be able to take action when you need to take action." But we want to hear about it. We want you to look into every single one. Most agencies, I would say high 90%, they don't report, they don't investigate any form of force. My thought process is, we have nothing to hide. Anytime we put our hands on somebody, even a slight nudge, that to me, my expectation is that's investigated as a use of force. So that's where you're going to see the increase in use of force numbers. That doesn't mean that there's an increase of use of force incidents occurring. What it means is that there are more use-of-force investigations that are conducted. That's something that we put into place. I spoke with our POA union president when we started rolling out this policy, and he understood, he agreed, he supported it. The goal is that these are all learning opportunities for us to look at, what could we have done better? What did we do well, and what could we have done better? So that's on use of force. As far as misconduct allegations, those things are very, they can be very subjective. So my thought is, well, let's investigate them. You know, a lot of agencies, if someone is unhappy with service, they resolve it at a very low level. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't find opportunities for sergeants to be sergeants, but there are some instances where someone is unhappy, and I would much rather do a thorough investigation, come to a finding, and that way, we can speak to it. We can stand on business with the information that we develop through an investigation. So that's where you're going to see those rises in numbers. I think, you know, prior to 2021, the department averaged around five IA investigations a year. I think we're at 30, 30 to 34. But we don't have this big trend of sustained violations for the alleged misconduct. What we end up finding are lower-level things, "Hey, officer, you forgot to fill out this form," or, "During the course of this, you," you know, very technical, performance-of-duty type things where you'll see the sustained violation. But what's alleged most often does not come to a sustained finding. And so again, we treat those as learning and growth and coaching opportunities for officers to know. And we uncover the small thing that you probably could get better at because we want our officers to strive to be the best.
Thank you for clarifying. That was my understanding. I just wanted to, but thank you. It was, thank you. I do have a question about this. So the sentence says, "For any race traffic stop outcomes are a fairly even split between citations and warnings." I didn't know, is, does, I don't, what does fairly even split mean?
So I'll touch on that, but then I'll let our auditor speak in depth. Essentially, what it means is there were no demographics where there was an outlier, where any particular demographic was getting more warnings or getting more citations. But I'll turn it over to Dr. Grossman.
Yeah, because I, well, okay, so let me back up. Because I went and I looked at the chart that you guys provided, and then I looked at the demographics for the city of Alameda, but that might not necessarily reflect the drivers in Alameda because, you know, people work here and visit here. So I did not see a correlation between our list of demographics for the city, so, you know, and the citations.
I can speak to that as well. So there is no census data on drivers.
Yeah.
Like in my household, I have people that live in our house that don't drive. And so they, but they would be counted in census data. So because there are no, there is no database that says these are the demographics of drivers, here's what APD does. We can all agree that there's no demographic that drives more dangerous than any other demographic, right? And so what we do is we go back one year, we look at our collisions. And when we look at our collisions, we then extract driver demographics, and that gives us a sample size of what the demographics of our drivers are. What we then do is we take that, and we have a profile of our drivers. We overlay the stops that we make and look to see, are there big changes, are there any outliers in any particular group? And there aren't. And so then, when we look at what the outcomes are, the outcomes are relatively similar. There is no demographic that's getting more citations or warnings. But I'm going to allow Dr. Grossman to expand if anything that I left out.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Yeah, he answered that perfectly. The department does look at collisions that are reported. They look at the demographics of their stops. They're not looking for a perfect match at all, but it's just, is it in the realm? And if it's not, they know it's something that they need to look at further. But from everything that I've seen, it doesn't match exactly. We don't expect it to match exactly, but it's within a few percentage points. And then for the outcomes of the data, again, we don't expect every demographic to receive, you know, 40% citations across the board, but as long as everybody is within a few percentage points of one another, we're fairly comfortable with that data. And then again, to the point of using census data to inform, you know, the people that were stopping. I did this analysis in Oakland when I was first hired there, and when I looked at the data, you know, 30% of the people that were stopped did not have an Oakland address. So if you're using census data to inform, you know, how many of each race you're supposed to stop, you're missing out on people who come into Alameda to work, or shop, or do business. So I stay away from comparing it to census data. The department does use one of the approaches that can be used. Again, there's no perfect, there's no perfect measure, not that I've seen, at least in the research. You can do it a couple of different ways.
And then I have, oh, I was going to have a comment and then a question, and the comment was about that there were no collisions as a result of the pursuits. So I just think that's good.
I updated, there was one.
Oh, there was one.
I updated the slide, yeah. Not the department's fault, though. That was the suspect.
Oh, okay. I was like, I'm like, I feel like you guys are making a good choice. And it's hard to make a good choice in a, you know, there's a lot of factors to consider in the moment. And then my last question is, okay, so for collisions, it says employees are found to be at fault 71% of collisions. And so I'm guessing these are officers having collisions in their cars a lot, so I can understand why the statistics would be higher than the average person. How do we compare, though, to other cities our size?
I don't know how we compare to other cities our size. I know in Oakland, they also had a problem hitting fixed objects a lot, especially in one of their precincts where somebody used to work. The structure in the parking lot was not good. Everybody hit a pole.
Oh, I was going to ask, so what are the fixed objects that are getting hit?
There are poles. Occasionally, it is, you know, maybe a car mirror, but typically, it is a fixed object that the officer does not see when they are backing up typically. And they're in their cars a lot. I understand that it happens. That's the reality of being in your car. But thankfully, there were no significant collisions involving police officers. Again, these are low, low-level minor accidents that are occurring, and so, well, of course, you want no collisions. I think the collisions we are having are expected.
Yep, and that's it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions, counsel?
I guess just a comment.
Counsel, over Desa.
You know, maybe.
Questions, as clarifying questions, we'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back for comments from the council.
I could hold off my.
All right. Do we have public comment?
Yes. They'll get three minutes each because there's two. They're both remote. The first is Savannah Cheer.
Welcome, Speaker Cheer.
Thank you. So I think just Councilmember Prior touched on it a little, but the racial breakdown on traffic stops is like, I think the larger point is to try to identify, like racial profiling with drivers, and it just doesn't seem like what's being reported is quite meeting that mark. It doesn't smell right, obviously. That's why you had the question, Councilmember Prior. And so I realize that Dr. Grossman has provided, said there's a few different ways. I would just encourage you all to maybe look at that a little bit more. I know there's also some changes on the federal level around reporting on this, and that's going to start to, we'll get more robust data around that, you know, as that happens. And I think somehow the FBI is involved, but I don't understand that part. So I would just encourage, you know, you to keep an eye on that. Anecdotally, we know that black and brown people don't feel particularly safe driving in this community. So I think you can match the anecdotal with at least some sense of data and try to just square that a little bit more. That's the point of having hired Dr. Grossman, is to like, take a closer look at that. So, and then just zooming out a little bit more, the police are not always right, and the point of having Dr. Grossman there is to point out where they might not be telling you everything. So I would just encourage you all to continue to look critically and like really utilize the role that you have, you know, created for this police auditor to actually audit and perhaps not be, you know, try to be as objective as possible in that role. It shouldn't really be like buddy-buddy with a cop. It should be like a specific person that is providing a service to our community. Our tax dollars are paying for that position, and you all had a mandate, you know, in creating that position to have them play a certain role. So it just, the tone of the presentation is just like a little disturbing, I think, to the, you know, the community listener who might want to take a more critical look at the role of police in our community. And so that independence and objectivity is really important. And then I would just make a note also on the staffing. You know, you asked, you approved these outrageously oversized budget hiring bonuses, but, you know, it doesn't seem like much has changed. So I understand you're getting back up to a number after a number of retirements and separations and whatnot, but I would just question, I guess, like, is that $75,000 really well-spent? And maybe continue to keep your eye on that, and again, utilizing a police auditor role to kind of analyze that more thoroughly would be helpful to the community as well because that's a really, really big budget line item that, you know, could certainly be feeding people, or housing people, or protecting people, not hiring more cops, so, who don't do any of those things. Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Janice Anderson.
Keith Anderson?
Janice Anderson.
Janice, Janice Anderson. Welcome, Speaker Anderson.
Hi, actually, Keith is my brother.
Hello.
Hi. This is really interesting information. I do have concerns about the way some of the information was presented. Like Savannah mentioned, you know, we, I guess the presenter said something about the traffic stops are consistent across race, but in the numbers, you know, black drivers were, the number was like 998, and white drivers was like 1,059. I don't, I didn't write down the numbers exactly, but, and even if you account for collision data, I don't think that we have an equal number of black and white drivers in the city at any given time. And for me, I'm curious how the collision data is reported because when I was in an accident, the CHP officer decided what race I was. I didn't, he didn't ask me what race I was. So that could be, you know, a point of interest there. I also want to remind counsel that Mario Gonzalez was killed. When he was killed, it did not involve a weapon, and they didn't initially even call it a use of force. They called it a medical emergency. So I know, I understand that Chief Joshi, you know, wants more investigation of these use of forces, uses of force, but I'm curious to see, to understand how that use of force is reported because use of force was definitely used in Mario Gonzalez's case. And then also, I understand that complaints in use of force are still investigated by Internal Affairs. Those are other cops. This is the same system that we've had for my entire life, all of our entire lives, probably sitting in that room. And this is the same system that has allowed us to end up with many violent and racist cops to remain on duty across our country. I don't know that cops investigating other cops and their use of force or complaints against them is really the best system for deciding who is allowed to remain on the streets trying to apparently like keep us safe. So those are just some of the thoughts that I had during that presentation. I think that this is a good position. I just think that we need to be looking at things a little bit more critically. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker? Or did you say we have two?
Yeah, that was the last.
All right. So with that, we will close public comment on this item. And counsel, let's start with you, Counselmember Desa. You had comments.
Yeah, I think my only comment is, I think, you know, I think we should just let the data speak for itself, you know? Clearly, we do need to control for race, and, you know, there's pretty standard procedures when it comes to police data. And, you know, when, I think the African-American population in the city of Alameda has historically been like 7%, and the white, non-Hispanic population is probably 36%. So when you look at, you know, the population, and of course, you can control it further for age, when you look at the population that we have according to the U.S. Census and then compare it to the police stops of 900-plus versus 1,000, there's, you know, mathematically, there's some issues there that could be corrected by controlling for race. You can control for daytime population, too. There's, you know, well-accepted data sets, you know, that track the amount of population that come into the city for work, and it's also census-based data, sample, based on samples. But the U.S. Census ACS is also based on samples as well. So, you know, and, you know, we should, it's okay to let the data, you know, fall where it may because, you know, there's a reason why we have a police auditor's report. And I do believe, by the way, that your presentation was great. Certainly appreciate it. Appreciate the work that your office does. And we also need to reiterate that the office is within the city attorney's office. So it is an armed distance from the police department. So I think the information that's being culled and then analyzed is valuable in terms of helping us understand, you know, where we are with regard to, you know, some of those larger issues that people had raised several years ago. And I think we're on track in terms of having the system in place to understand that our police force is indeed responsive to the diverse community that that, that Alameda now is. I, I also like, you know, the fact that we're tracking, um, uh, police officer, the number of police officers. I like the, um, monthly time series data. It's great to see how it kind of ebbs and flows. And while we're short of the 80, the goal of 88, um, my, my, what I hear is that the sworn officers, the people who are actually on the street, we have come, um, to, to, to hitting the targets. Is that, is that correct? Hitting those targets. So that's, that's absolutely fabulous. I know, I know, we, we still want to get to 88, um, but, you know, maybe those are the, the managers or the, the higher managers. But, you know, it's the people, the men and women on the streets who I think the Alamidans are certainly clamoring for. So having this report is, is, is very helpful, um, to seeing how we're moving in that direction. It's also, just to go back to the very first point, it's also very helpful in terms of understanding, you know, who, um, what kinds of uses of forces being done and, and the type of, of, of residents by race, um, uh, who are, um, who are interacting with our police force. So, just to close the loop, you know, it's okay to control the data for da- uh, for, 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 for popu- uh, for race in the way that I think, um, uh, police data sets are typically, um, controlled for race. Because, you know, it, it'll only make us better. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we just go down the line? And Councilor Bowler, anything from you?
Um, yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Grossman and, um, Chief Joshi for the, for, you know, the, the hard work on this. I think this is an effort with the Police Auditor's Office to, you know, that is, as Councilmember Dayce said, is separated from the, the police department that is still in its infancy. And we've only been doing this for a year and a half. There's certainly even more, um, you know, state-of-the-art practices that I think we can apply. I think the city is doing quite a few things, but we do have to have a really critical eye in these areas. I mean, the fact that tonight we're focused on things like use of for- force, um, pursuits, some of the racial data is, those are really key areas. And so if we can dig even further into some of those, I think that would be really useful going forward. Um, there's also, you know, this, a big thing here about the climate. There's not, it doesn't really describe that way in the, directly in the presentation. But I think there's, you know, obviously a concern in the community about the process we went through as a community where we're, we were struggling with certain things about policing. And we've come to some really good improvements and some good places. So we need to think about, I guess, not just the climate between our citizens and the, the police, which is really important, but also within the department itself, right? And I think you see in this reporting some emphasis on issues like recruitment and retention. And I think it's important for our community to know, why is that 88 number important? How are we gonna get there? What's the plan? We've seen this, um, fairly steady number for some time. And we think we've made some real strides in terms of recruitment. So maybe is the key factor here retention and what's going to, what's gonna be the, the secret to, to really unlocking that? I think one of the things that really stands out more than anything about this report is the training side of it. And I think in the future, to be able to see a little bit more about what that means, to educate the community about that and, and the, and the city leadership would be really important. Because I think you can tell just by the numbers that Alameda is really distinguishing itself there, so that's great. But to see exactly how is that broken down and is there, are there any metrics to show, you know, how effective that is for, for achieving the results we all want. So, um, definitely appreciate this presentation tonight and look forward to, you know, seeing even more proactive, creative, critical, intense efforts to get, you know, a really important result for the city. I mean, this is the biggest portion of our city's budget. It's the most important in many ways. I mean, public safety and how, um, our community is able to, you know, really feel like Alameda is a really important place to live because of, because of those safeguards. So, thank you both.
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Prior?
Okay, hi. Um, so I, um, first I was gonna say that the self-reflection that the department is doing does appear to be more of a common practice. I'd say, you know, for example, you give the examples of how you reflect upon the speed chases, um, the reporting of the use of force and that these are things that you, you know, that the data is important in analyzing the data. So the only thing I, I was going to, I was gonna ask this, but I, I didn't. But, but maybe a thought like, you know, is this, uh, practice being applied to the demographic data of, of the pullovers, for example? And then I just wanted to, I liked what Councilmember Bowler said. He said, um, "The training is something that distinguishes Alameda." And, um, I just liked that comment. So I just wrote it down. And, uh, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jensen?
I, I appreciate the data that's being presented in a public meeting. And I'm comfortable with the data in this report. I, I, um, was not on the City Council when the police auditor was, was, um, engaged. But that was a community reaction to some things that were happening in Alameda. And I think that being transparent and providing this information is a real, is a, is a real strong step. But what concerns me is not about this data, but it's about the APD efforts in the area of traffic safety. And while Dr. Grossman's report is not providing data about the relationships between traffic stops and collisions, the chief did state, um, in response to another question, that the department uses collision data to, as a way to inform and understand potential bias. And that's great. But what I would like to see is to use that collision data and use the traffic stop data more effectively to stop collisions, especially collisions with bicyclists and pedestrians. I know that this is something that we all share, this, 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 this objective is something that we all share. But as I see this report, I, it really continues to make me uncomfortable. I see in the report, in the overall collision data, that we are, our citation rates are lower than they have been in, since, since in this report. This year, December of 2024 was the lowest rate of citations. And even looking at moving violations, it's not, you know, it's not enough. I, I don't want to go out and ticket everyone. And I appreciate that we're responding to other crimes and other, especially personal crime, especially retail crime. But we can, we, we need to keep people safe on the streets. And so I, I, I'm not sure what more we can do. We've staffed up patrol. We just need to, and, and maybe I'll ask, um, one question before I am. But let me ask that, to help me understand. When I see that 50%, about 50% or a little bit less of the stops are for warnings. And I see that about, maybe there's about 11 and average in 2024, say, of 11 or 12 stops a day. How, um, what, what, what is, what the, the determination to first make a stop? And then, I, actually, I don't even need to know about the warnings because I feel like a stop is going to have an impact. And if someone stopped, they might not run the red light or turn the corner too quickly or hit the pedestrian. But, um, how, maybe Chief, you could just give me a little bit of, um, insight into your thoughts in this area and how we can be more effective at, um, reducing the collisions that are, that are happening?
Sure. So, um, I think that traffic safety should be approached from a multifaceted approach. Yes, enforcement, police are one, one resource that we would apply, uh, when it comes to traffic safety. But, um, there are other approaches. We work very closely with Public Works, Vision Zero, uh, because we do have this philosophy around, um, crime prevention through environmental design. I think if we can change and, um, uh, enhance, uh, public safety through environmental design, that's gonna be a long-term approach. As it relates to operations, uh, police operations with traffic enforcement, APD prioritizes dangerous vehicle code violations. That doesn't mean that, the, the vehicle code book is thousands of pages long. So that means there are thousands of violations that are in the vehicle code book. However, officers do look for the, the dangerous ones. That's the speeding, running the stop sign, running the red light, things like that. But there are other things that they also address. They might address, uh, broken taillights. Uh, there, there is a, a safety issue there. If you can't see that the, the lights, uh, brake lights are working, that's something that our officers should be approaching or addressing. Now, when we, when it comes to decision-making on traffic enforcement, um, there is an acronym, PIE, PI. It's Prevention, Intervention, and Enforcement. Depending on the, the action, um, and we like to, we like to address things at the lowest level. If we feel like through education, we can remind somebody, hey, you're doing, you know, 32 in a 25. And explain to them, what are the risks with that? And someone can walk away from that stop. That, I mean, the, the, these are subjective, um, interactions. But I trust my officers to make that good judgment on whether or not a person understands the risks that are there. Now, a person driving 60 in a 25, it's a little bit different there. I, the, the officer may take on an enforcement approach. Or there are little things that, uh, you know, intervention. Someone's getting into their car, they turn it on and start to, start to pull away. An officer may say, hey, uh, don't forget to put on your seatbelt. And they may put on their, put on their seatbelt. So, um, sort of the order that we go in is prevention, intervention, and enforcement. Enforcement is definitely one of, uh, many options. We understand that enforcement, um, you know, that it, there, there could be fines that are associated with that. And so we recognize the impact that could have on somebody. But we also think that if we can educate somebody and get them to understand the risks of the behavior that they're engaged in. And we believe that, you know, based on that, that conversation, that somebody may change their behavior. I think that's a win there. As far as traffic enforcement, um, we, we did have a, a greater approach to. So I take on, I look at all the data with, um, traffic and crime. And, um, I, a big focus in 2024 was crime. And so we focused on crime and that's why we finished the year with double-digit reductions in all crime in Alameda. That's something for us to be proud of. We did realize that we have finite resources. And so when we expend, um, those resources, there, there's a give and take. With that said, we've increased our staffing. When, uh, you know, I first got here, we had 30% vacancy. We're down to about 22%. Now we have more officers that are out there. We've strategically moved them. We've changed their shifts. They work different shifts now based on the data that's coming out. And that affords them the opportunity and ability to, uh, engage themselves in, in proactive enforcement, to include traffic enforcement. I say all that to say that our numbers have doubled, uh, just in 2025 in the, in the amount of, uh, traffic stops that are occurring. Again, they don't always end in a citation. So it just all depends on, uh, the behavior that the officer observes and what the interaction is like. And could we, could we get a person to change their behavior based on a conversation? If not, sometimes a ticket needs to happen as well.
Well, I appreciate that. And I, I'm not advocating that everyone should get a ticket. And I actually, this data is kind of, um, it, it, it isn't complete for me because I, as you mentioned, you look at collision data and the citation data or the stop data. And you are able to compare those things. I, uh, what I, what I see, you know, is, um, your significant information reports saying that there was a collision or there was a pedestrian or a bicyclist involved. And I try and add that up maybe at the end of the year, the end of the month. But I don't really know whether or not, I, I could be completely wrong. It could be that the collision data in 2024, or excuse me, the, um, stop data, the citation data and the traffic stops was, was pretty much stable. And, and the collisions were equal or, or similarly in years when there were a, a larger number of, of traffic stops. I just don't have that data. So I would appreciate to think about that and if that data could be presenting in, to improve transparency. Not so much from Dr. Grossman's, um, report, which is effectively responding to the need for, for transparency for your officers in your department. But with regard to transparency for the, um, for these types of, of, um, of citations and, and, and issues.
Yeah, no, that, that, I thank you for that. We'll, we'll look at, we do actually, I, I failed to mention this earlier in my response. Uh, when we have our comp stat meetings, one of the areas that we talk about, we talk about crime and then we talk about traffic. And we want to look at where are we doing traffic enforcement? And it's all informed by data. Where are collisions occurring? Those create what, what's, uh, referred to as hotspots in the city. And those hotspots, we look at where we have a, a concentration of, of collisions. And that's where we need to do our traffic enforcement. So every four weeks, we assess, where are we making the stops? Do those stops overlay perfectly or closely with where the collisions are occurring? And they, they have been.
Right. And, and so if we, you know, you presented at our last meeting a, a different set of data. And looking at this data is, um, is unique and helpful too. But to be completely transparent, I will, I as an Alamedan say, wow, you know, i- is there a correlation between collisions and this reduced number, more collisions and this reduced number of, of stops? So that's just something that I want to be aware of and that I want to be transparent about with, with our community. Thank you.
To all finish us out, um, thank you, Dr. Grossman, for the report. And thank you, Chief Joshi, for all the, um, important, um, significant information. Um, you can stay up there, Chief Joshi. For, um, the, um, I do want to just, um, hearken back to the comments we heard about Mario Gonzalez. That was a tragedy. Any loss of life is. That tragedy occurred before Chief Joshi was, um, was part of the Alameda Police Department. And one of the reasons that Dr. Grossman is here and presented to us tonight is that following that tragedy, the City Council, and I was, um, because I was mayor then, we, um, worked with our city manager at the time. And there was a police reform and racial equity, um, process, subcommittees that many Alameda residents participated in. And among the recommendations was that there be this position that was independent, that wasn't located in the police department, that is part of the city attorney's office. And so I do, um, I do appreciate that information. I also know that Chief Joshi is a data-driven, um, chief. And, um, but, so just for the public who might be listening, please, when something occurs, a crime, when you're a crime victim or you've been in an accident, do call the police. I think you probably know the, the difference between if it's a 911, you're in immediate danger of physical harm, or whether you could call, um, police non-emergency. But we don't have these statistics, APD doesn't have them. If you just post on Nextdoor, "Alameda peeps." And probably on occasion, I've sent a screenshot over to the chief saying, okay, I don't remember a Sig info about this. And, you know, he did a little digging and found out that indeed it wasn't reported to the police. So you, and, and, you know, reached out and took a report. So, so that's just important. And then I also want to say with regard to the hiring bonuses, and again, this was money that was sitting in the police department's budget that wouldn't have been going to feed or house people. But in the police department's budget, it was unspent because we didn't have enough officers and we weren't attracting them to hire. But through, um, Chief Joshi's initiative, we have attracted incredible candidates and then have the choice, um, do you know what, Chief Joshi? You can probably sit down. I don't need to keep you standing there. But, um, that we have this incredible choice of like the cream of the crop, um, that he has hired from. And if you attend the, um, the swearing-in ceremonies when we hire new officers or when, um, there are promotion ceremonies, I am always just in awe of the diversity of the number of languages, second and third languages spoken by our officers. And I just want to read into the record something that really impressed me. And I know I copied you on this, Chief Joshi. One of our lieutenants, I think, Jeff Park is a lieutenant, correct? So you may know, I hope you know, that all of our different business districts now have a district commander who focuses on business safety, prevention in those areas. And so this was a message from Alameda PD's Business District Commander for the West Alameda Business District, who said, "The Alameda Police Department is deeply committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. As your new Business District Commander, I am both honored and humbled to serve you because I understand firsthand the critical role small businesses play in helping a community thrive. As a son of immigrants," I believe his parents are from Korea, "I had the privilege of watching my parents run several small businesses throughout their lives, from a copy print shop, real estate office, to a vacuum sewing machine repair store. Though we faced challenges along the way, they always took immense pride in their work, earned the respect of the community, and gave their all to serve others. Small businesses not only folk, foster local pride, but they also improve economic resilience and help create a vibrant, engaged community. As your Business District Commander, I will always advocate for your success and do my utmost to ensure the safety of your business, your employees, and your customers." And then he goes on to share practical, um, safety tips. But I just thought, that just really struck a chord that beca- I think a number of our small businesses are, are, um, run by immigrants. And many of us are children of immigrants. And just to know, and he's not alone, being a son of immigrants on the police department. So I, that is what APD looks like. And that is what is going to make us a better force. I'm, and Councilmember Jensen, I agree with everything you said about every time I see a, read a SIG info about a bicycle vehicle or a pedestrian vehicle collision. They don't all result in citations, I will add. But I know they're all looked at individually, but we all want to bring that number down. And we got, I think, I wasn't the only one, but we got, we heard from the Fernside Homeowners Association, concerns about some traffic safety issues crossing streets there. And I do appreciate staff for responding. And there was mention of a neighborhood meeting for that district at the library on a Saturday in March. My question is, and I don't know if staff or Chief Joshi knows this, how do we get that information out? Because that's such good public information for those neighborhoods. And I'm hoping that since it was a Fernside HOA representative who contacted us, they have a way to message. But how, how do we get information out? And are we seeing good attendance at those meetings?
Yeah, so we, are, are, are you referring to our community meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, so our community meetings are, are scheduled throughout the year based on the beat and the neighborhood. So any of our residents or businesses, if you put, go to our website, click on the link that takes you to community meetings, you type in your address, and it'll let you know where your meeting is, what date it's going to be. And it'll let you know what beat you're on and who your, your area commander is. So that, just going to our website is a way to access that.
Which is great. So that requires the, you know, community member to be proactive and go to the website. Is there any way we also reach out? Sarah Henry, did you want to add anything to that?
We do. On, on our social media platforms, we also remind folks that Beat 13 or whatever beat it is, Beat 13 is meeting this evening or, or next week. You know, come on in and, and learn more about what's going on in your neighborhood, meet your area commander. And so we, we, we do it twice.
Okay. And so do you know how attendance is? Are we?
So it's increased ever since we first started it. When we first started, didn't have much attendance because people were, yeah, low. But thank you to Sarah Henry with helping us with messaging. You know, leveraging social media, she's got this huge list of, of people that she can reach out to. So the, the attendance has increased and improved.
That's great. Okay. Well, I'm, thank you. Thank you for all the work. Thank you, APD and the officers. And thank you, Dr. Grossman. Okay. And so this was just, we were accepting this report, so we don't need to take a vote. Is that correct? Okay. So we're moving along because it's getting a little late. We have city manager communication. And if you would, city manager, just slip in a little bit about what we're doing to help inform people who are concerned about things, you know, happening at the federal level.
Sure. Great. I have the hiccups all of a sudden. So I will try to get through this without hiccuping. I don't know what, how that happened. Anyway.
Sorry.
Sign-ups are now open on the city's website for the city's annual Fourth of July parade. This is the community's event, and we hope to see our favorite entries as well as some new groups. On March 1st, the Alameda Police Department has a team participating in the Polar Plunge, which is now taking place here in Alameda. We hope you will consider taking the plunge and supporting the Special Olympics. This Saturday, the city is holding a community input meeting about the public dock at Bull Hole Circle Immigrant Park, so please join us. And then lastly, as the mayor mentioned, we are working with the city attorney's office on preparing some templates, especially, well, some for our immigrant residents, but as well as our seniors. Because there's a lot of, we've received some emails, just angst and anxiety about some of the programs that seniors depend on. And obviously immigrants in our community knowing their rights. And so we are talking about putting together some templates so that we can make sure we're responding to, to folks that email us. And possibly we can talk about promoting some of that information community-wide. So we're putting that together.
Thank you for all that. And then we go to oral communication on agenda items, Madam Clerk? None there? Okay. No council referrals. And so council communications, Tony, Councilmember, sorry, Desa, it's getting late. Anything from you, Councilmember Desa?
Just briefly, on February 6th, I attended the ceremony acknowledging the enlisted personnel of the quarter at Coast Guard Island as well as a civilian personnel employee at Coast Guard Island on behalf of the mayor and the city council. So it was my pleasure.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you. How about you, Councilmember Bowler?
I can report on February 10th, I attended the.
Your mic. Okay.
On February 10th, I attended the QTAC Open House, which is pretty exciting. That's the Queer Teen Alameda Center. And there was a great level of community support. So that was exciting to see all that and everyone who was there from different sectors of the community. And I think that hopefully the message got out to our young people and our schools of the enthusiasm for that and support.
Yeah. I think four of our five councilmembers and four of the five school board members were there and a number of city staff, including the city clerk, assistant city manager, recreation parks director. It was lovely. How about you, Council, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I was going to say that as well. That was, it was lovely. It's, it's so important to support these young people. I know that right now it's going to be open once a month, but I know there's talk about it being open for that particular group every week. I think that's wonderful. And it's good. I, we need to support young people, especially vulnerable young people who might, you know, it could be a challenge. And, and it's so wonderful that, like you had just mentioned, that there were so, that our, I'm sorry, mayor, it is late, mayor, as the Ashcraft mentioned, having so many community leaders there to say, hey, this is important, you matter, you are safe, and you're a priority. And I was really glad to be part of that.
Thank you for being there. Councilmember Jensen?
And that lovely check from Supervisor Tam, that was the best part too. I, I actually don't have anything to report on my activities. But I did want to say in response to some things that have come up this evening that we do, Chief Joshi mentioned and the mayor mentioned that we do, do quite a bit of outreach. And there are opportunities for community members to share their thoughts. Often it's by email, which we all receive and which the city manager and city staff always respond to. So email's a great vehicle to share concerns, share thoughts about your neighborhood, especially with regard to traffic. And I've heard, as was mentioned, that my homeowners association in Fernside has been concerned about traffic. And I agree. I live on Gibbons Drive and I have had some concerns. And, but there was outreach and there has been outreach. There was outreach about two, three months ago with a pop-up on Gibbons Drive, which was well-attended by our both staff and our city consultant, our traffic consultant, traffic engineers. And there was a, a discussion for over an hour, about 90 minutes of discussion about how, whether there was necess, it was necessary to calm traffic on Gibbons Drive. And the majority of people who came to the meeting were vehemently opposed to any traffic calming on Gibbons Drive for the simple reason that they believed it was going to increase traffic on the side streets or in their neighborhood. So this is something that we're, I appreciate staff so much for thinking about these things. I know we're moving forward on Fernside with traffic calming on Fernside between Tilden and High Street. And I know that these discussions will continue. Although for now, in response to the outreach that was done, substantial outreach, unfortunately, I think that we won't be moving forward as much as I would like to say that we will, that we won't have any direct and immediate tool to move forward on Gibbons Drive. But I will be keeping an eye on it and I will be listening. And I will be working with staff in the future as we proceed on Fernside to, to address the, the traffic issues on Gibbons and in that neighborhood.
Thank you. And so briefly, I'll report that on February 7th, I met with our new Senator Jesse Adagian, a new state senator who was formerly the mayor of Berkeley, where we got to know each other pretty well. And just, we've got good representation in, in Sacramento. He has gotten excellent committee assignments. And so we will work closely with him in developing and supporting legislation. On February 9th, I attended a lovely Lunar New Year banquet sponsored by the Torshun Society in Oakland Chinatown. And our city attorney, Ibn Shen, was also in attendance, as were many elected officials around the, the area. And on, yes, the QTAC opening was, was mentioned. And then last week, on February 12th, City Manager Jen Ott and I attended the Alameda County Mayor's Conference Meeting that was hosted in the city of Pleasanton. Our speaker was great. It was Tim Burrows, who is the Executive Director of Stop Waste. And I have a public service announcement from Tim Burrows. So here is my Exhibit A. This is a bio bag. And you might, it's the convenient size for that container you might have on your kitchen counter to collect green trash, which is good. This bag is not good. This bag is an imposter. And Executive Director Burrows told us it actually has plastic particles in it. It takes a long time to break down. So at the, the compost facilities where your green bins are emptied, the workers there have to go through. And when they find these bags, they have to take them out and they toss them in a receptacle that goes to the landfill. So of gr, and I think the city manager will agree that that was one of the more animated discussions in Q and A. We can talk trash, those mayors. But, so someone said, but what are we supposed to do? And I said, should we line the, the compost, the kitchen counter compost with a paper bag? And he said, what I do? I just put the green trash right into the, the counter bin. It has a lid. It probably has a charcoal filter. When he empties it out in the green receptacle outside, he comes back in and rinses it out, and it's ready to go again. And just so simple. But please don't buy bio bags anymore. We thought we were helping save the planet. We're just adding to the waste. So when we know better, we do better. And gosh, is that a positive note to end on? Anyway, thank you. I really want to appreciate staff for all the hard work. We had some great staff reports, council, great discussions, pleasure serving with you. Everybody go home safely and we'll see you again soon. Thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned. Oh, wait, Sarah. Oh, the meeting is still adjourned. Okay.